For the Zoom people, okay, good men. Good evening. Welcome to the Village of Mamaroneck. August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting at eight P. M. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I would like to lead the nation to the United States of America and to the public.
I'm gonna do some things out of order tonight. The first thing we're going to do is. Oh, and you have motion to open the meeting. Sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, there was emergency exits on my right and on my left. If you have a cellphone, please put it on mute. First item on the agenda is a swearing in of a police officer, Liliana Mendoza, and I'm gonna let the chief give a little introduction of officer Mendoza. After she's finished dealing with the press. Mark my ledger. Thank you, sir. Chief.
But tonight we are here to officially swear in Liliana Mendoza. Liliana Mendoza has been a lifelong resident of Mamaroneck Village. She has three young children and is the oldest of four siblings. Liliana attended schools in the Mamaroneck School District and graduated from a Mamaroneck High School in two thousand and twelve. Liliana is known to always have a smile on her face. She is very work-oriented, outgoing, and likes to be busy. In her free time, Liliana enjoys spending time with her children and finding activities to do with them. Liliana is very excited about learning everything she can while at the Westchester County Police Academy. She's looking forward to being able to use her training and new role as a police officer here in the village as she's always wanted to get back to the community.
I. I, Liliana Mendoza.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The regulations of the Village of Mamaroneck.
And the regulations of the Village of Mamaroneck.
And the policies of the Village of Mamaroneck Police Department.
And the policies of the Village of Mamaroneck Police Department.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer.
According to the best of my book.
According to the best of my belief.
Congratulations. Oh, you know, would you like to take pictures with the? We already promised your son.
Up front, up front, right in the front. You don't have to ask him twice. There's another one behind you, mayor.
You might as well.
That's half the room.
I'm gonna share all these pictures with the team, and the chief will share them with you.
I do see. He looks good.
Sally, sorry, guys. Take the mayor's phone so he can be in the picture.
Dance and family.
Mayor, we need one with you.
Say cheese. Ready? One, two, three, cheese.
Let's get the mayor in there. Sally, if you don't yell, he doesn't hear you.
Gonna miss you at CBS. No, I'm bigger and better than you.
Right. See, Felicia. That's Felicia. She works, Sally, she works at the court.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I didn't.
All right. All right, nothing we're gonna do tonight is gonna top that. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna move a couple items around because we have folks here, but the first item we're gonna take out of order is usually the village manager reports at the end of the meeting. But since he's got a report about flooding and I wanted to get him on before the Nielsen rate is start, start dropping. Jerry, could you give your flood report at this time?
Yes, man. So, earlier today, I provided my report to Deputy Clerk Sally Roberts, who will put it up on the, on the novice right on agenda. So, on July twentieth, mayor and board, the village received an email from Rebecca Chris, Deputy Permit Administrator, New York State D. E. C. with the following message. Please note that the D. E. C. has completed our review. The application has deemed, has been deemed complete, and we expect to issue the permit in the next week. So that was on July twentieth. On July twenty-fourth, we, trustee Leilani Yager Reed, Gino Fabasio, and myself appeared before the Town of Mamaroneck C. Z. M. C. Commission to present our dredging permit application for local consistency review. On the twenty-eighth of July, the town wrote to the New York State Department of State the following. It is in our opinion that the C. Z. M. C., that the proposed project is consistent with the policies of the L. W. R. P. of the Town of Mamaroneck. The C. Z. M. C. is in support of the Village of Mamaroneck's effort to reduce flooding for our residents, protecting life and property. The D. O. S. had a fifteen-day comment period from the date of that letter, which was July twenty-eighth, and that period has passed before it completes their permit review process. So we should be hearing from them very soon. As I've mentioned before, in March, February and March of twenty twenty-three, we cleared significant obstructions under the Barry Avenue Extension Culvert. And we removed about two feet of rock dirt and trash in that culvert. In April, May, June, July, and so far this month of August, we have performed seventy days of river maintenance dredging in and around our rivers. The crews at D. P. W. typically vary between five employees and fifteen employees, depending on how many employees stay after their regular workday. So far, we've added, or we've added six hundred man-hours that have been performed. If you equate that to what a contractor would have charged, the individuals at the D. P. W. have completed eight hundred thousand dollars worth, worth of work so far. We have diligently worked to keep the dam, the bridge abutments and the culvert, culverts free of debris. Sometimes it's very challenging because the number of severe rainstorms we continue to have. There's a constant flow of debris that goes into our rivers from neighboring communities, and that keeps us extremely busy. It's hard to calculate the green debris amounts that we removed, which are trees, shrubs, stumps, those logs and that kind of material. But we estimate about sixty yards of green waste have been removed. And so that's a significant amount of material. We've also removed around twenty cubic yards of gravel and rock that create basically small islands or sandbars in our rivers around the culverts and abutments, which create, you know, natural choke points for, for this material to be collected. Of course, I want to thank the staff at D. P. W. for putting in all this extra time and work. Since February of this year, when we received our new excavator, which was approved surprisingly in twenty thirteen, we really have been working very hard under the leadership of the new general foreman, James Barney. Of course, we're not perfect. We continue to work very diligently. We have to work around rainstorms and other events. But the purchase of the excavator and training our staff and getting our staff to do work was, was probably the best thing that we've ever done to help this village. In September of twenty twenty-three, S. L. R., which is the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Consultant, will appear before the Board of Trustees, probably at the second September meeting to present findings regarding the New York State Resiliency Study of the Mamaroneck River and the Sheldon Drake River, sorry, the Maranac and Sheldon Drake River. The study will highlight suggestions to several high-risk areas, H. R. A.'s that they refer to as H. R. A.'s in the village and recommendations that they've developed for us. Tomorrow, I am meeting with our contractor, J. T. Cleary, who will do more extensive dredging. And our first dredging location will be the Fenimore Road ninety-five Salt Shed location. Other than that, all the stuff that's on my report, the stuff that I had reported previously, and if the board has any questions, I'm available to answer them.
You had some pictures of Grove Street area?
Grove Street, yeah. Grove Street was one of the areas.
That's where, where we.
It's one of our choke points.
Choke points, and we started on that a year ago, right? I mean, we started to approach it a year ago, but had to wait for the.
We had to get the D. E. C. to give us the approval to go through culverts and other crossings, and that's why we're able to get into that area.
Otter Creek was, was taken out of the request because of the title, title action.
Correct. Last week, I had a meeting with the Town Administrator Debbie Reisner, and so she, I had asked her if she could talk to the supervisor of the Town of Ry to create an interlocal agreement so that we could go over into the town border, because into the town border is where we really do have to dredge. The stuff that's in the village portion that were permitted, the non-title stuff, really doesn't have any work that needs to be done there. So we need to get into the Town of Ry. So we're looking for an I. M. A. or some kind of mechanism so we can go in there and help clean up that Otter Creek area. The title, the title area of the Otter Creek will be a separate, will be a separate application.
Local. And is there a timeline on that?
No.
Um, do, do we have an update on the application process for those mini grants that we set aside for village residents or unable to utilize it?
Yeah, so Lori DeBoer from, from the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery and I are meeting this week to try to come up with. She had promised me when I spoke to her late July. No, I'm sorry. It was early July that she would get down here in August to be able to start receiving applications. Our program is gonna complement that program and hopefully help the people that they may not be able to help. So we're waiting for them to start their program.
Got it. Thank you.
And unlike the dredging that was started by the village and then stopped in two thousand nine, we, we are taking the material away.
Trucking it away.
Yeah, previously when the village had done it, they banked it.
First, we're not banking.
And they went back into the.
I think that's useless.
Thank you, Jerry, very much.
Thank you, man.
You know what? I bet a lot of people tonight are here for the R. F. P. for Hunter Lot, which is four B, and I see there's a lot of small children and moms who have to probably get up for work in the morning. There's children. Somebody to baby carriage. So I'm gonna take that out of order. This is item four B, resolution authorizing a village manager to issue requests for proposals for a hunted tier, all affordable mixed-use development. Okay, just to catch everybody up. The parking lot across the street, which is in a rather dense state of decay and has been for a while, is village-owned property. Few months back, the board unanimously rezoned it to C. Two, which is the, the zone that is contiguous around it. And the reason we did that is in the hopes that we could build an all, all, an all-affordable housing development for folks in our community and in the general area that need a hand, that need a place, a decent home to raise their families in, a safe, clean, affordable home. You know, we have people living in this community who are spending fifty, sixty, seventy percent of their income on housing. And, you know, I don't need to tell anybody that's raised the child in this community that if you're doing that, there's very little disposable income for anything else except food and clothing. And if you're lucky, you can pay for that without receiving help. There are a lot of people for whom a flat tire is a financial catastrophe. And, you know, they have to decide, you know, what their child isn't gonna do. So I believe that one of the challenges and responsibilities of government is to give everyone at least an opportunity in this world to succeed. We all won't have the same outcomes. We know that. You know, we're adults. We, we've watched how the world works, but everybody should have a chance to succeed. And you cannot have a chance to succeed if you're paying seventy, sixty percent of your income, and you, you can't save your kids' colleges. You can't afford to give your kids S. A. T. help or any of the other things that so many of us have taken for granted while raising our children. It, it, full disclosure, I said this before, I grew up in an all-affordable housing development in New York City. It definitely gave my family a leg up. My father worked for the Department of Sanitation. My mother didn't work. And, you know, because they, they had a home that was safe and not, not spacious, there were, you know, most of the time there were six of us in two bedrooms. But it, it, it was enough that we could move up in the world. And, you know, my, my siblings all succeeded. They all went to Ivy League schools. And, you know, that was because my parents had an opportunity to save a little bit to start them out right. And I'm not saying that that's gonna be everybody's, everybody's end game, but it, it's, it's really gotten a lot harder. As I said before, my dad worked and my mom didn't work. That, that's, very few families have that situation in the Village of Mamaroneck. And if you have it, you're extremely lucky. There's people in this room who are probably working two or three jobs as it is, just to keep their head, heads above water. And, you know, this country in my lifetime has gotten more and more divided in a lot of ways, but the, the worst way it's gotten divided is socioeconomic. The divide between the wealthy and the poor has gotten greater and greater and greater. And that has bad outcomes for folks that you, you can't really realize until you've walked in their shoes or, you know, experienced having friendships with folks in that situation. So I, I really believe that we have a responsibility to do everything we can, whenever we can, however we can, to try and make this a more fair society. And, you know, some people say, well, that's not a small government's responsibility. I think it's all of our responsibility, and I think it's a responsibility that if you're in government, you should take that very seriously. Because it, it's, it's how we treat each other and what kind of community we want our families to live in. And we talk about the diversity of the Village of Mamaroneck and how we all moved here for its diversity and we honor its diversity. But that doesn't survive without nurturing. You know, it, it will not be here twenty or thirty years. It'll be the memory of diversity. So, you know, I, I, I know that the, the phrase affordable housing is scary to a lot of folks, and I understand that. But I ask everyone to keep an open mind, and what we're really trying to do is level the playing field a little bit and give our neighbors and our, our, our residents a chance at a better life. So that, that's where I stand on the issue, you know, before we open it up to the community, if any of my colleagues want to say anything, I'd be happy to hear. Anybody from the community, please, wanna speak on this issue?
You can just come up to the mic.
Come up to the mic. I see people have their signs up. Yes, sir.
My name is Gary Bush. I'm a resident of the village at ten sixty-seven Constable Drive. I'm here with my wife Diane. We built three projects in the Village of Mamaroneck successfully through the village. We have affordable apartments in our, in our properties. I did not come here tonight actually to speak about this issue, although I've chatted with several of you informally in the past. So these, these blocks are completely non-compare, which is what I'm usually at my worst. About five years ago, Mayor, when you stepped into office, I think that's about right?
Yep.
You were a proponent of changing the zoning to encourage affordable housing and limit the amount of market-rate housing. In, in effect, what the, the, the goal was, was to cause developers to wanna build market-rate housing, like giving them bonuses. At that time, I spoke against the proposal because I thought it was disproportionate. Not that I'm against the idea of market-rate housing, affordable housing, but I think the incentives have to be balanced. That's what I said then. When that proposal was introduced five years ago to drive affordable housing, I may be wrong, but I think there had been no affordable housing units built in the village system. So it, it, it was not successful. Your father, now was a wonderful story that you told, would not qualify for the affordable housing that's being proposed for the property. Just to be clear about that, because you're proposing, as I understand it, and I only notice informally, that all of the units be for sixty percent of median income in Westchester County. Is that roughly correct?
Thirty, forty, and sixty.
Eighty, eighty, forty, and sixty.
Thirty, sir, thirty, forty, and sixty.
Thirty.
Thirty percent A. M. I., forty percent A. M. I., sixty percent A. M.
So sixty percent or lower?
That's right. That's right.
Okay.
You got that right.
If the average sanitation worker, for the average, for, for a sanitation worker in the Village of Mamaroneck to qualify to live in that apartment, their, their income would have to be roughly less than forty thousand dollars.
No.
Well, average median income in Westchester County, a number I know, interval, it, it is about seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah, and do we, the? No.
No.
Go ahead.
Okay, well. I believe in affordable house. I've had units of affordable housing here and in other communities and in other communities in the Town of Mamaroneck. I will tell you that since we've been in the affordable housing business, we have never had an application for one residence who moved from fro, from property in the village to our buildings, not even an application. Forgetting about qualification. If I'm not on a tour on, I will sit down.
Yes, you have three minutes time. Thank you, Mr. Hirsch.
Thank you.
Next, and just for those who are gonna come up, it's a three-minute time limit. Anybody else?
You don't have to. Don't worry about it.
Hold on, Glenn.
You're getting faster.
He's doing one. Five oh six Hill Street. I am a member of the budget committee, but I am here speaking as the ward and minister of Hill Street. Affordable housing is exactly that. It's affordable housing. It's not low-income housing. This is where we, we keep mixing and matching the two. From the last I saw, according to the county, the medium income is a hundred and seven thousand dollars. So if you had somebody at around forty percent, you're probably starting off about fifty thousand dollars. That, that's, that's not poor, but you know who that is? That's your restaurant workers. That's the person who works in the dry cleaners. You know, that's a struggling artist. This, this is the people. That is a retiree. You know, somebody retires, a police officer retires at fifty percent salary. That is, that is a retiree, and we have too many people, either young people who are coming back into the village because even though they have very high educations, a lot of the professional jobs in the city start at forty, fifty thousand dollars when the kids first get out of school. And anybody here who's a parent knows that. You know, it says unless you're a doctor or lawyer, if you're just trying to graduate and get that first job out of school, I know, I know a dozen kids, oh, they will be started forty-eight thousand. They will be start. Well, they, they wanna start their lives too. They wanna have that first apartment, and if you're talking about families of three and families of four, well, now all of a sudden, you're talking about income levels of sixty, seventy thousand dollars, where both adults are, are making forty, fifty thousand dollars a year. There is a dearth of that type of housing in the village. Now, when you talk about, well, they really haven't built affordable housing units, I've actually pointed out, because what happened is when they passed the laws about the affordable housing units, they also passed a lot of other restrictions that came in at the same time, and when you took them all at the educate altogether, it basically stopped village. You know, you, you, you lowered the heights by five feet. You had setbacks. You had density. You can't build next to, next to the rivers of the stream fifty feet. You add all that in, it did absolutely stop. I think I, I can name about six units of affordable housing that have been built in the village. But that's not just about affordable housing units. That's about, it's so restrictive just to build that even market houses aren't getting built in the village, and that's something they're gonna have to address. But quite frankly, I was the one who first proposed the, the affordable in Hunter Avenue lot, because even if you redevelop other places, you're only gonna get two apartments here, one apartment's there. And we have a desperate need to have affordable housing for workers here in the village.
Thank you, Mr. Tippett.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, so a couple of people trying to get up.
Me name Reverend Sammy Burks, I'm a priest at St. Thomas's Church, and also a village resident. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank the board for leaning ahead on this, for being bold, for proposing fully affordable units here as a member also of the Mamaroneck Coalition for Affordable Housing. I hope that, you know, as you move forward, you'll continue to, you know, reach out to us, particularly our housing experts who are part of that, to help you with this. I just wanna say thank you. But I just want to say thank you um as both a priest and as a resident um to be moving forward to providing housing options for all of our people, for um, as I'm saying, to keep our village diverse. And to, you know, giving housing, which is the basic human right um for everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know that there's concern about, you know, that, that the village can't do that some different things at the same time. And I know that this board is committed to be able to provide affordable housing and work on flooding and work on traffic and work on safety and all of that. And so just, well done to all of you. Thank you for being all committed to our village.
Thank you, Tammy.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else like to speak on this issue?
I understand this items about the RFP.
Please identify yourself.
Stuart Tinker. So I have some comments about the RFP itself. And when you discussed it in a work session, there was a discussion of requiring a site visit. Um and I don't see that that's required in the RFP. I think that was the mayor's question. It was a good idea to have that. So maybe you want to add that in? Um, there's a requirement for public spaces for parking. And as we know, Hunter Lot is the go-to destination for people when flooding happens. There's no requirement or even um higher low number for how many public parking spaces should be in the development. So I think that might be something you want to say, I mean, somebody going back to the proposal for five parking spaces. Which isn't really gonna serve the um community that well. That's the concept always been that this development will be mixed use. I thought it was going to be um just housing. The RFP says it's mixed use, which will take away from potential housing units. There's nothing in, there was a lot of discussion when this came up about um the effect on flooding. There's nothing in the RFP to require stormwater management components to the project. So that may be something you want to add. Um and the final thing is that there's a response date of August twenty-third, which is only nine days. It's a fairly complex proposal. It just seems like a very short time. So you might want to extend that and add the other things I mentioned. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Derek Winchester, ten twenty-five code room. I'd like to thank you guys for taking this on. Uh this has been a while that uh people have been talking about it. And I think we can't get into the position where we're gonna be anti-builder, anti-building. Yeah, we're a little bit, you know, carefully, but we have to do it. I was just looking at the census today. And I was looking at nineteen ninety to two thousand, two thousand and ten, two thousand and twenty. And I'm only gonna speak for what I see. Black folks in Marinac, blacks, our numbers is just dropping, dropping, dropping. Uh usually when we have a flood here, majority of people that are renters, you know, they have to leave Marinac. Because you're not gonna take a three-month lease at another apartment. So when you leave Marinac, you don't come back. You know, and so that's kind of like what I talked about before, slow drip gentrification. You know, we argued about gentrification when you buy a place versus if you take a place. But the end result is, we're losing, we're down to three point three percent of the people in Marinac. Out of nineteen thousand, our twenty-two thousand, I think it put us at seven hundred and sixty-seven, which I have not seen that many people. But regardless, if it's not just a black, Spanish, white issue, it's about a lower income issue. Because we're losing the park. I mean, I get it, people are afraid that, you know, building is going to cause more flooding. But if Jesus Christ himself came down here tonight and said, if I had to find one place in the village of Marinac that will not flood, he couldn't have picked a better spot than Hunter Lot. It's on a hill. And the water, I mean, if something happens, I deal with irrigation every day. The water's gonna roll down to the harbor. So, I mean, I think that this is a no-brainer. Bill Jones' lot, we're gonna get the best bang for the buck here. We just have to be bold and say, we're gonna do it. You know, I'm supporting this, and I think everybody else should support it. That's all I can say here.
You jerk, you jerk.
Talk about the housing, that you let the developers come in. Right, housing.
Hold my gun, too.
I want to hear you better.
Okay, I'm a long-time resident back here, there thirty years. Um we did talk about the housing, you let the big developers come in. They allow section eight so many units, but then they don't, they don't go through this. Okay, there has been a lot of what people want to see in this, this is a lot of matter. Another thing also too is, you're talking about the parking lot. Once, if you do tear that down, where are the people gonna park? Not just that, the parking is expensive. The garage is messing with people's cars because of the corrosion. I have a vehicle there, and my vehicle is I see where they have patched it, but it's not doing any good. You have nothing for the seniors, I'm a senior now. You have nothing for the seniors. We have to pay full price for everything. If you tear that lot down, where are people supposed to park it in the village? There is no parking in Marinac. Nowhere you go, not just that, but the housing, like I said. You have so many units that are selected for section eight, but then when they get in there, the rent goes higher. I'm in a rent-controlled building now. Uh my aunt, she just passed away. A family member wanted to take the apartment. The landlord went from thirteen hundred to twenty-two hundred dollars. That's a rent-controlled building. I know it's against the law to do that. But what can you do, and who can you go to? There's a lot of landlords here in Marinac that are supposed to be rent-controlled. And they're going way above where they're supposed to go. And it's not fair. Then you have buildings where you have no locks. You have corroding pipes. You have lead installed some of these buildings. It needs to be addressed. You call uh the inspectors, they come out, they bypass. Is it a bylaw? This is getting disgusting. You know, for the rent that we have to pay. Regardless if you're on housing, or if you have long been in the building, it needs to be addressed, especially with the buildings. A lot of these buildings still have lead, and they still have the lead pipes. My ceiling fell in my bathroom, and all you see is metal pipes, they're corroded. Then in my pantry fell down. They're talking about coming in the next day, you cannot do that. It has to be sprayed first. Then you wait two weeks, you come back, you pull down those walls, and you come and switch right. They're not doing it. And a lot of these super that are doing these buildings, they have no license. So how are they getting away with it?
Yeah, just the, the RFP does require they replace the parking, the, the extent they can. Uh we're, we're thinking about other areas of the village for parking too. So that, that is gonna be part of the plan. Okay, uh your, your complaints about, you know, deteriorating housing almost, you know, makes the argument for why this needs to be done, right? Because there is so much housing in the village that's in a decrepit uh state of repair. People living in ceilings falling down, roaches, rats, and, and other issues. So we, we, we wanna, you know, raise the bar a little bit. But, you know, the, the, the questions that you have about landlord tenants, I think are, are addressed. You, you, if you go to Washington, the housing lines, they will refer you, I believe, to the county, and the county will.
As far as the housing also, where are you gonna build this house? And you still need parking?
Yeah, we, we, it's factored in.
Ma'am, I forget, I didn't get your name. I, I thought so, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Hillary Short, and I live and I just want to say, thank you so much for moving this forward. I've been on the um Zooms since the Marinac Coalition for Affordable Housing started. And they're an amazing group of knowledgeable people and the work they put into this. And most of them don't live in our village, but live in Marinac, um but in the town. So I just wanted to um say that I'm really pleased with moving this forward. And similar to what Abby said, you know, I think everything can be worked on at once. You know, I do think flooding is the most important thing in the village. And I, I do think that you're moving it forward. And um, you know, everywhere's doing it. I was in South Africa in the summer, um in June. And I was going to areas where they built a hundred percent affordable housing, and that's thriving. You know, in England, my mother's um, behind my mother's house um that were fields that we played in all our childhoods. They built a thousand houses there because London made them do it. You know, it's just something that people have to do. And I'm so proud that, you know, we have a board that's listening and moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Good evening, DM, I'm in this community resource center, one thirty-fourth Center Avenue, but also seventy-two Oakway Kings Road. Uh I stay for residents of my mother, I lived here thirty years. And I would just like to say, I don't envy the position you're in. I understand as a board of trustee, you have to acknowledge that there are different sides of the table. You have to be wary and mindful of all of the community members that are part of this village. But I do honor and acknowledge the fact that you're taking into consideration one step at a time the fact that we need affordable housing in our community. Maybe you'll take that step first, parking will come. Flooding is coming as well, flooding mitigation is also coming. But when you look at the community and you're asking them to take their time to make signs away from their family, their work time, and they're able and willing to do all of that, it's because it matters to them. So thank you to the community for showing that this matters to them. And thank you to the board for showing that affordable housing matters to us.
I'm Marty Marta. Uh Flood Mitigation Advisor Committee, speaking for myself. Uh probably know what I'm gonna say, but I know it's on a hill. The water runs downhill. Just don't forget about flood victims. Not opposed to affordable housing, because me and my wife, we might need it someday. But don't forget about us. We're here, we're in the present. And I know people want this, and it's needed by some people, but this building should be like, you know, it should be a bomb shelter for rain. So please don't forget about the people who get flooded. And make sure, because we spoke about this at the work session, about all the strengthening of the codes. And that building's gonna be huge, and it's gonna disperse a lot of water. And not one drop leaves that property five hundred years, hun- a thousand years, whatever you guys have to do. Because whatever, anybody thinks so or not, it's on a hill, but it runs to the river. And the river is the problem. And the flooding is a problem. And we live here now. We have to get relief, and somebody said that the flooding is coming. It's not here yet. And there's no relief here yet. I know you guys are doing what you can. And you are working on it, because I know firsthand that you guys are working on it. But it's not here yet. So we need the relief, and we need to be we need to be noticed too. And just don't forget about us, and I, I'm not gonna let you guys forget about us, trust me. Trust me. And just, you, you know how I feel and the codes and everything. Not one drop goes in that river. Um, Ida, I don't care, there's no excuse. Figure it out, get the engineers, do whatever you have to do. Roof retention system, uh detention systems, tanks that hold the thing, whatever you have to do. We are not to be forgotten. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. I pointed out that the structure across the street, uh the Hunter Lot uh maintains no water in the site at all. Every drop of rain that hits the Hunter Lot ends up right in the west basin. It, it drains right to the west basin. I guarantee you, anything that's built there is gonna be a vast improvement over what's there now. Uh because of the, the way the codes are and the way we're gonna, this is gonna be an LED building. And uh so I could just guarantee you that whatever's done there is gonna be, I mean, look at what's over there now. There's not an inch of that property that's uh pervious. It's all impervious, and it's falling apart. And we have to close sections from time to time because it's dangerous. But I, I hear what you're saying, Bernie, and I definitely know you're not gonna let us forget, and you shouldn't. Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone. I, I think affordable housing is important. I've been living in the village of Marinac since nineteen ninety. Full disclosure, when I came to Marinac, we were homeless. Uh we lived in the bars from motel. And I was commuting, taking a bus uh to the school district in Mount Vernon, uh seventh grade. And I transitioned to Marinac High School. I graduated college after graduating from Marinac High School and came back. It wasn't my intentions to um come back to this community, not because I didn't love it and like it, I just couldn't afford it. Um but my wife lived here, and my stepson, and he received services, he was special needs. So I left my place in Pelham Bay where I lived and came back to Marinac. One thing I like about this community, I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, white, black, Irish, Italian. I trust you based on your face value, what you say to me and how you interact. So I'm not here to say that it's right or wrong. But I will say that it's a need for affordable housing. Um I'm raising a three-year-old son here. I would love to stay here, but me and my wife honestly talking about in the next three years, leave just because the quality of life that we want for my son. If I was single, I can get up and go anywhere. I have a college degree, articulate, I can go. I'm still working, I can go. But there are some people that are less fortunate, less, less fortunate. We just had a lady who got sworn in, right? I know, I've seen her dad. He works, where he works, I'll just leave that to his family. But you said that she was a lifelong resident, and you used that term lifelong. That has a legacy to it. It's not short-lived. That means you spent your time here. So, you know, these are the people that are breaking their backs. When we get flooded, where I live, everything was decimated by the water. Some people lived on the hill, they were farmed, but so many cars were lost in the avalon. It's disgusting, people's lives. I mean, so my whole point for coming up here is just because I want to be transparent. And I want to say that I believe affordable housing is right. But if it's not conducive to the community, that's what's more important, what's conducive to the community. So if it's not conducive to the community, then I'd rather deal with the flooding. So if it's not conducive to the community, then I'd rather deal with the flooding versus having a place to live. That's just me. I know it sounds odd because I have a place to live, but I'm saying the flooding is the issue. So that project is gonna create flooding, further flooding issues. That's something that we should look at to create a project that is not going to have the flooding impact or the issue. Thank you for my time.
He, Brad Terrance. Just wanna start off by saying I am a Republican of affordable housing. However. I feel like this has gone about in the wrong direction, in the wrong process and most frankly, good advice. You have so many people in this community that have gone up and spoken, so they live here. They just happen to live in a place that floods. They can't deal with the flooding. Some of the other people have said, doing the flooding. I don't know why it's taken twenty, thirty years from blame past administrations. Fine. But we have one big problem this town and that is. If you are to, yeah, go ahead with affordable housing, that's fine. But I think it's just a Band-Aid on a symptom. Instead of fixing the cause. We have empty storefronts. We could have new businesses. We have. You know, we have empty, empty buildings in the flats for additional businesses, additional jobs, job creation for residents. Those things combined with fixing the flooding so people don't lose their livelihood. The one thing that they save up for their entire life, their house. Can be washed away in one storm because of decades of neglect. I have one other question. Can you guarantee any of these people here or they're listening that they can get a spot in this housing unit? Nobody can guarantee a spot. So you're telling all of these people that, that they could have a place to live. Those are false promises because you cannot control it. That would be illegal. Okay? Just because it's here doesn't mean it's going to help our people. It will help people, yes, one hundred percent, but we have thousands of people that were affected. By the floods year after year and you're gonna help fifty? New people that are not from our community, I'm saying like you're not from our community, you don't, you can't come in. That's not what I'm saying. I welcome everybody. But thousands of people like with twice, three times within, within the last ten years. Lost their livelihood. But we're focusing on something else instead of our current residents. It's beyond me why we can't focus on one core issue. And as far as the RFP is concerned, uh. I know that you had a study done, a study to go to find out what the best strategy would be. For incorporating affordable housing. And their step one was to assess and quantify the number of existing affordable units in the town. That has not been done. So without that information, I don't see how we could go ahead and say this would be.
I wanna clarify a couple things. I have never promised anyone in this room that they were gonna have an apartment. In, in, and I never said anything tonight that would lead me to tell any of you that you're guaranteed an apartment. What you will have is a chance to get an apartment. And. Please don't call off the audience. Regardless of flooding, the building will only alleviate flooding. There will be less. Impervious surfaces across the street than there are now. That is a fact. I'm sorry, please don't call off the audience. We've had this discussion before. We are doing this board everything we can possibly do at this point. To work on the flooding. There are items on the agenda tonight that have to do with flooding. There was a, we started the meeting, we had a discussion about what we're doing about flooding. Uh the Army Corps of Engineers Plan with the help of God will be started uh by the end of this year. And there has been more that had been done to alleviate flooding in the last two years and happened in the seventy years before that. So you know, we, we're doing everything we can do and we're working on it. And we can do more than one thing at a time. We can do traffic. We can do flooding. We can do housing. We can do parks. And you know, we, we can do what's best for this community and focus on the totality of the community. So, next.
Hey, Sue Dzieszewski, I live on Stony Brook Avenue. And not once have I heard you say anything tonight about the Beaver Swamp Brook and flooding that we incur. And I am here to speak on the Beaver Swamp Brook again and the flooding that it causes in my neighborhood. The BSP begins at Polly Park Road and Westchester Country Club and travels four point five miles from Harrison, Ryan, and Mamaroneck. Before it goes underneath the Bowls Road out and out to Guyanese. There are other waterways that merge into the BSP before it gets to the Ryne section. A particularly large waterway enters the BSP from Harrison at the Harrison Mamaroneck border on Harrison Avenue. Unfortunately, the BSP continues to be the number two worst polluted waterway in Westchester County with fecal bacteria. Certainly nothing to be proud of and yet nothing has been done to clean this waterway up. Imagine contaminated water. Coming into your home like it does in my neighborhood. I have letters that my ugly neighbors wrote to the village of Mamaroneck in the nineteen eighties asking for help. We all have letters to this village for the past twenty or so years asking for help. The channel walls that hold up our backyards were built in nineteen thirty-five and have clearly been established as the property of the village of Mamaroneck. The channel walls are decaying, but yet we are told they're okay. Go and throw some cement on them. The rocks at the bottom of the wall have become dislodged, thus causing parts of the wall to ju- to jump forward and become unstable. We have sinkholes in our backyards. We have the Westchester County sewer main line that runs through our backyards. We have been told numerous times that the cost ratio is too high and not enough homeowners fled in my neighborhood for anything to be done. There was a Beaver Swamp Brook flood mitigation commissioned by the village in September two thousand sixteen. This study also talks about the erosion of the channel walls. Woodland and Current said it would cost approximately three point two million dollars to mitigate the BSP, which was never done. Another waste of taxpayer dollars for a study with no action. Yet my neighbors and I see that the Florence Park area gets continued attention and help from the village. They were a part of an almost seven million dollar storm drain and sewer study along with floods in Washingtonville area and that is rightly so. Why wasn't the BSP a part of that study? We have raw sewage that backs up into our homes before the fecal bacteria of water from the BSP comes in. We put our cell pumps hoses out to the street to try and drain water from our homes and backyards. But it's a lost cause because the storm drains emptied back into the BSP and the water continues to go around in circles. And now the village has removed the BSP from the Capital Projects comprehensive plan. As per Lou Young on Facebook, it's because the BSP is titled. I haven't seen that in this plan here. Are we really supposed to do that? Flooding should be the number one concern that is dealt with for all residents in this village before anything else. And I don't ever hear you talk about the brook in your email messages, which certainly not tonight is not his here.
Just to clarify, I was talking about the um.
Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Okay. Thank you all for your comments and for your input. Anybody on the board like to say anything before we vote?
I would, I, I would say. That flooding and housing is, are interrelated because a, a lot of our affordable housing, too much of it is in the flood zone. And um there isn't affordable housing uh available that's high and dry. And that is why uh we lose so many um people uh after, after an event. They, there's nowhere for them to go. Uh we need to have this. We're, we're late doing this. We're, we're decades late. Um we are losing affordable housing units by doing nothing. Right on this block here, there are affordable units. In, 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 in houses that are, in, in buildings that are slated to be demolished and replaced. And uh that means that we are, we can have fewer uh affordable units all the time unless we uh move on this. And uh we need to, this, this will help, will fix it. Uh it's, it's overdue. It's, it's little enough to do. It's the least we can do, I think. Uh and because we are losing uh affordable units to um development and to um. And to flooding and we're losing diversity and uh, and losing the uh, the future of the uh, of the village uh by default. So I think we just have to do it.
Anyone else on the board?
Yeah, I do. I am, I think to address just the very basic thing, issue about the dates, this was, I think, the plant, this proposal was slated for adoption. On July twelve, like we're, we're gonna have to refine the dates. We can't expect the, the proposal, I mean, the site visit was supposed to have happened a few weeks ago. Um and we did, we did say five weeks ago that we wanted to make sure that everybody who came, who, who bid on this um. Came to a site visit, we're requiring them, but um I, I'm concerned. I think that we have to manage expectations. So I think one expectation is, you know. We can't, we can't know who's gonna move into these apartments because. We, because it's capital A affordable housing and we have to market it in a very specific way according to their housing law. Um and I think, you know, if enough communities do this, I mean, Lurch wants doing it, Town Mariner is doing it, the more communities that do this, the more chance there are of, of units. So that's huge, but I think there's some very important facts that we haven't considered here and I, and I think. I'm worried that we're not giving enough information to developers. We're, we're bidding on it. Um we haven't specified how much parking we want. If they're not gonna, you know, I'm not sure it's reasonable for them to replace the number of parking spaces that we have in the current lot. But we're gonna have to figure out some other places to park to offset that because we're going to expect that the units that are built also have parking with it. And we, you know, we can only go up X amount. Um if it's, if it's going to be a mixed-use development, which is mentioned in the cover page, then we can't do the extra story because that's only for a hundred percent affordable. So I think it can't be mixed-use because, because I am assuming the developers don't need the extra story. Um and there's also a big issue. It's not on the tax rolls now. How, how? You know, the Washingtonville Housing Line pays taxes. They know that taxes. Wha- how do we, when they've built buildings, they've had them on the tax rolls. How are we going to subsidize the um services for the building? So I, I, I just, I feel as though, you know, the, the developer's gonna have to figure this out. This is not an easy process. They're gonna have to put together. I mean, I don't even know if, if, if a five-week turnaround, which is what we initially expected, is a reasonable turnaround for, for this because it's a complicated. Project to put together because they're going to have to figure out where they're gonna get the financing and um. You know, how, what, how big the units are gonna be, how many units are gonna be, how many parking spaces are gonna be, so. Um I, I, part of me thinks that this is gonna be a conversation with a few, with a few developers. I don't know that we're gonna get. Um a completed RFP based on the information we've provided. Um or that we're providing, so um you know, I, I don't know, you know, who's, who's going to own the building, who's gonna manage the building. I, I, I will say that this should not cost anything to the village because we accept. That we will be providing services to the people who live there, so we're going to have to. You know, pay for that cost at the end and that's usually done with some sort of taxes. We're not offering a tax abatement. Um but we're also not rebuilding the parking lot, but a parking space is like thirty thousand dollars to build. So any developer who builds. Parking spaces often really make it hard for affordable housing projects to sort of cross the lines. Because the parking spaces are so expensive. So I think um we, we really need to be specific, more specific about what we expect from the developer. And um. I think that that may, I don't know how many developers we've actually talked with about, about this in terms of. Putting together a proposal that's going to yield a great, you know, a great project. And I, and I also, I, I'm also not sure five weeks is enough, but you know, if it, if, if, if five weeks isn't enough and we don't have. We don't have to accept an RFP that doesn't work for the village. So if we find that there are things that we missed. Or that developers need more time to bid or to get the packages together, we can do that, but I think we really need to manage expectations. Because this is an important project. This should not cost the village money. We have this land. This shouldn't be, I, I think the, the con- the argument that. By building this, we're not able to do something and flooding isn't, this isn't correct. I think, I think we can do both of these things at the same time. Provided we have the staff capacity, not the financial capacity, but I, I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we. We know what we're getting. Um we are not the developers and we don't have the financial risk with this. It's the, it's the nonprofit housing developer who's gonna have the financial risk with this um and, but they need to make money. I mean, they're. They're not in it as volunteers, but you know, they're nonprofit developers and they have a business model and they work with. Federal and state agencies and grants, but they are, you know, it's a job for them too. So I'm a little concerned that we haven't managed expectations and been specific enough about what we expect.
No, go ahead.
No, you go.
No.
Well, where are you going?
Please.
I, I, I mean. I think you have the community to be, be able to do multiple things at once. Flooding, I'm personally affected by flooding. I grew up in the Washingtonville area. I've been hit by the flood in oh seven. I think fourteen and then the last one, then Ida in twenty twenty-one. That put me out of my home for more than a month. So I, I know the personal touch of, you know, why flooding is so apparent and we need to do something now. But I think the reality is and the facts are, we are doing something now. I know a lot of us are waiting for that shovel to be in the ground. For that Army Corps plan to be implemented and, and finally begun and, and I believe Jared, correct, if I'm wrong, I believe that's gonna start as of December or January of this year. So we've, we are getting inching closer and closer, but in the meantime, we as a village and as a board have been doing things. In the, in par- tried to do things in parallel with, with, before the Army Corps kind of gets in and it begins their work. So when people talk about and they come and they say, well, flooding's important, you're not doing anything, that's just not the case. I think what we're not doing anything about is affordable housing and this is a chance for us to take a step to provide affordable housing. I agree, we can't guarantee anybody in this room will get a, go get one of those units. We can't guarantee that the next flood is gonna, you know, any mitigation we do is gonna protect anybody from losing anything in their home. We can't guarantee anything. What we can do right now is be able to try to maintain our diversity. So when it does flood and those people have to be displaced, we're not coming back. That we, we have those units, we have something available and we can be able to, one, keep our diversity. One, and it's not just our diversity with, with, you know, race, but our diversity in people and their employment and, and their age, I think. We think of affordable housing and we think of, you know, projects and very low-income people and that's, that's not what we're talking about here. I think what we're talking about, affordable housing, we're talking about the recent college graduate who wants to come and live locally. I think we're talking about the senior. Who wants to downsize but is so used to all the amenities in the community who wants to be able to go in that unit. I think we're talking about, you know, the single parent who's raising two kids, who needs somewhere to go and live. We're talking about many people. I just think we have, we as a community can be open-minded to what we talk about as a board. We talk about affordable housing. It's not low-income housing. It's affordable for, on all ratios for, to certain many people, so. Thank you.
You gave it a chance.
I did, you did. Um I agree with what Manny just said, but I also wanna keep in mind that. We have to work with every single person that lives in this community. And I'm a true believer. That even though I may not be going through something, some. And I'm a true believer that even though I may not be going through something, somebody is. Somebody is, and it's my job as a human being to help them in the best way that I know how. I am in the seats to help people, not just one, but all. And with the best of my ability, with my knowledge, with all the gifts that God has given me, that I will try to do that. I've been, I am on two committees, I am on flooding and I am on traffic, but that doesn't mean I don't care about the Arts Council. That doesn't mean I don't care about the Budget Committee, that doesn't mean I don't care about the Plane Committee, it doesn't mean I don't care about all the other things. But those are the things that I'm in charge of, I'm liaison to. We can care about multiple things as well as multiple people. From all income levels, from all races, from all creeds and everything in between. As well as think about our future, our kids, can they afford it? And sometimes we often think about ourselves and where we at, we never, we can't even comprehend as adults half the time what we were back then. Just imagine what these youth are going through right now and what they're coming into, they're not going, coming into. And some are not even going to college because that's not a choice for them, and that's not what they want. But they, the job market is not what it used to be, and not everybody has the privilege of having generational wealth. And we have to think about all those things when we're sitting up here making decisions for our community. It's easy, it's easy sometimes to do one thing, but then it's sometimes it's hard when we have to think about all people.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. I just want to finish you off by saying, you know, any. Any project that's, you know. Benefiting a lot of people is going to have a lot of challenges. And I bet there are challenges that we will have to face and overcome about flooding that are not known to us at this time. There are problems about, you know, it's challenges about this housing proposal that we'll have to deal with as they arise. But you have to keep trying and you have to keep moving forward and you can't let the potential for difficulty keep you from doing something that's good for the whole community. And it is good for the whole community, you know, it, there's been many studies that say affordable housing enhances everyone in that community. New York State is losing many young people and populations because of the dearth of affordable housing. People are moving to cities out west and, and right now it's, you know, the, the world is very mobile. But people want to stay here because they grew up here and had built this place and there, there's generational people here and in the Marinerick and in the area. And this really matters, this is a big thing, as, as a vice president once said to a president, this is a big thing. And this is, and I, I, I think that. As I said before, this building will not increase flooding, one iota, it'll decrease the storm water runoff at that site. Right now it's a hundred percent runoff at that site. And it will, you know, enhance the area, that, that is, you know, literally a decrepit structure that if we don't do something anyway is going to fall down around us. So. I would like to amend the request for proposal to have the return, return date instead of October, instead of August 23rd, October 23rd. It'll give people sixty days and to require, put in there, Jared, to require a site visit.
Site visit, yeah, okay. Mandatory? All right, okay. Right?
Yeah.
Um, can I, I just, there, I, the other, there's just a little more language. I think that we, the mixed use is a, is it, the mixed use description is on the cover. But there are references to all affordable in it, I'd just like to make sure we make sure it's all affordable, maybe.
Yeah, so the mixed use is only in reference to the request for public amenities.
That's.
No, it's not for.
It's not for businesses.
And, and I think that we talked, we're a little vague when we talk about the financial benefits to the village. And I, you know, like, I mean, the financial benefits to the village are, you know, housing is better for the village, let's face it. And, you know, having safe, healthy housing has long-term ramifications. But what are the financial benefits that we expect and is it that we expect? Certain, you know, tax revenue from the forty, whatever, forty or fifty units, do we expect? You know, it's, it's, is it, who's going to own the building, we own the land, is there, I mean, those kinds of things I know will have to be worked out. In the proposal and the developer's going to have to come up with some sort of a structure, but I'd like to be a little more specific. Because I think that, you know, we're, we, I think we do need to make sure that we aren't building a building that's housing forty or fifty new people. And the tax burden is on other people who then no one can't afford to live here because their taxes go up. So I think you need to make sure that the building is sustainable, which, which, which the buildings that Washingtonville Housing Alliance has built in the community are.
Jerry, we talked about that before, right?
So the, the building would be on our land, when you have a tax bill, you get the assessment for your land, you get your assessment for the building. The building would be taxed just like a regular building, land not, because it's our land. But I think, I think it'll come out in the RFP, I think it'll come out. What we tried to do is make sure that we didn't box in everybody so that they, we could get the best proposal and the most creative proposals. And we talked about it a little bit, more than a little bit with Dan, we just wanted to make it so that. You would get the most aggressive, the most, the best, the best qualified, someone who really wants to do this project. And, and I, I didn't want to box us in.
Let me point out something, the RFP is not a contract.
No.
Then, and when, when they, when they respond to the RFP, we, if we pick one, we pick the one that seems to work best for us, then we work out the details. And, and that, that's when that dance happens and it happens in the, the, the planning process also. So the RFP, we shouldn't, you shouldn't look at it as, this is the done deal because it's not at all. And, and I think what they, they've done is they, they've done a good broad outline and that will allow different developers to use their imaginations and give us a better plan.
We have talked, and Nora, we have talked to the, to the county, who was it, I can't remember, I can never remember the school guy's name, now I'm on tape, so I can't, he knows now, I can't remember his name. So we have, we have to, and Greg can't remember his name too, thank God. So, so we, we have talked to the county to, to, to read through sentence, sections of this proposal to make sure that funding. That developers would go after at the state level is not in some way jeopardized by how we wrote the RFP. It's vague for a reason so that the, so that we could get, that the developer could potentially get whatever they need to build the best building for us. And that's what we're looking for.
And Jerry, I, I recall that there's a possibility of our, our revenue stream for us getting air rights, right?
On the, on the building itself. I don't remember if I talked about that.
Not if we're using them to build a building.
No, it was just, it was just basically, we talked more about replacing the structure, having the two hundred and ten spots minus what would be required for. The housing, which is three quarter per unit, right, that's in the code. And then.
It isn't even one per, it wasn't even one per unit.
The code, the code, and, and Greg reminded me, it's, it's point seven five per unit.
So if it's forty units, you have thirty parking spots.
Correct, but we did talk about solar and those kinds of things, I don't remember the air rights, I don't remember that air right.
It's, it's nine twenty, and this is the first item we've done on the agenda. With, with the amendments that I, with the amendments that I offered, changing the date to October 23rd, twenty twenty three.
So the site, mandatory site is August 23rd, we'll make it August 23rd, sixty days from mandatory site would be October 23rd or more than, more or less sixty days, all right?
Do we have to make it the same site visit, I just, I just feel like we are so late and it is summer vacation. Does it have to be one day for a site visit or could it be more than one day? I know that's a burden for staff, but I think, you know, August 23rd is next week.
But since we're making it mandatory, I can try to be flexible, but let's try to gather everybody on it. It's next Wednesday, it's next Wednesday, not this Wednesday coming, it's a week from.
They know about it.
They'll show up, they'll show up, they're, they're already lining.
It's going to be released tomorrow if.
All right, all right, I'm making the motion with the proposed amendments that I offered.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, for the role, Sally.
Ashley Brawling.
Yes.
That's a re, yes, young.
Yes. I am very grateful, I for all of you for moving this forward.
Thank you, board. It's the size on.
Now we can go to the meeting. Oh, you know what?
Don't you all want to say?
The first item on the agenda is communication to the board, if, if you could make it brief, please. Hi ma'am.
Probably the village is what, agreeing to what people are saying. And I'm just wondering, you said forty units, not four, I love the character of my neighborhood. I just don't want a huge, tremendous building like they built in Harrison, I'm just wondering what we're talking about.
You live near one fifty one Fenimore Road?
No.
You don't live on Livingston?
Livingston Avenue.
Directly across the street is one fifty one Fenimore Road.
I don't know, it's fairly.
Yeah, it's very confused, it's not that big.
It's not that big, no.
Not that big.
Or when you say not that big.
Not as tall.
We, we don't have the exact dimensions yet.
Yes, yes.
Correct.
Yeah. With renderings and all of that.
A lot of opportunity, they'll be. It will be.
I want a nice building, but I want it controlled, I don't want a massive thing that would destroy the character of the name.
Understood.
Thank you, man.
Understood, thank you.
All right, and just to remind everybody, with communication of waters, a three minute time.
My name is Sue McCrory and I'm coming to actually address some things that you said on, at the meeting on July 10th, twenty twenty three about my art seventy eight petitions. First mayor hasn't told the residents that he personally supported the twenty seventeen petition that's. To correct open meetings. Back then Norman Rosenblum was mayor, I'm a seeking election and meeting violations were common. After a particularly egregious meeting about a food establishment operating under permits. Tom Murphy, who generally disapproves of our seventeenth, emailed me to say, Sue, I was wrong, don't drop your lawsuit. To my surprise, once Tom became mayor, the village spent sixty thousand dollars advancing a draconian view of a building law. That regular folks had no rights to enforce violations unless that, you know, was specifically in danger. I'm thankful that the New York State Appeals Court rejected such an extreme application, it would have history that the objectives of open news. I also would like the mayor to stop misleading the public about their responsibilities and village location. There is no way that Stuart T. Prida or I should be blamed for the village's choice to mitigate. He offered to settle early on if the board members simply got open news all training. The second matter where the mayor's disclosures have been misleading involves a new three million dollar water line on a private road flag over. Westchester Joint Water Works wanted the village to pay for the new water line. I and other residents believe the private Flagler owners were responsible. And urged the village to request an opinion from the New York State Attorney General as to who should go. At last month's meeting, the mayor said the reason no AG opinion was sought because it was because our village attorney was confident of his decision. Confidence doesn't matter, legal correctness does, taxpayers should only pay three million if the law required us to do so. The facts show that Mr. Spalzino wrote five contradictory memos, all ignoring the deed to Flagler Drive, showing that the water line was privately owned. At one point, Mr. Spalzino claimed that Westchester Joint Water Works funded the water line. But later conceded that was wrong, he next claims that the village of the Marinerick had to pay for the Flagler water line. Without identifying the law that would make the village responsible for a private part of the water line. I think the village tax can for a three million dollar water line that is not remotely a village responsibility. My petition is trying to recover that three million dollars for taxpayers.
Your, your time is up.
People spend it on B. Scott Park.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to correct a couple of things. The lawsuit that Ms. McCrory talks about, the Flagler Drive, the village won, village won decisively. As a matter of fact, the judge has cited Ms. McCrory and is asking that she pay the legal costs of some of the defendants. So the law. Has said that the village did the right thing. And to talk about the other lawsuit, when I came on the board, the majority of the board does not want to settle that lawsuit. Of the people that were here beforehand. And so we didn't settle that lawsuit, but the appeals court did not say that Mrs. McCrory was right. And the, the appeals court said that Ms. McCrory had standing and that it was supposed to go back to the lower court to be adjudicated. And that never happened, so they never said you were right, they said that you had standing. And that is, that is, that is a misrepresent, that is a misrepresentation to say that they totally agreed with you. No, you did, okay, thank you, next sir.
Hey Tim.
My name is Tim O'Connor and I'm a member of the Fox and Gray Commission, I'm going to pull myself out of the loop there and. I talk on behalf of myself, Tim O'Connor, purposes. We talked about flooding, so I might as well throw it into the mix as well. We need some kind of resolution for testing air, water and soil. I haven't seen any emails back from the board, I have been here on six occasions, sent the board two emails about the issue. George Latimer was back here last year, or last, yeah, last year September, it's almost a year, almost a year that I came to this board. It's like, you know, there's a possible issue with cancer, haven't received anything. But yet trustee Yizer Reed talks about tonight, well, we're going to help everybody here, all shocks, I'm still sitting here waiting for an email or some. Resolution to where you're going to step up, George Latimer was here last, last year in September, they said, you know, we have a cluster situation, cancer clinic. He stepped up and said, you need the resources, touch base with him, have you guys done that yet? No. So my point, yeah.
Yes.
And, and so what's, where's the communication, what's, any feedback?
The Department of Health is supposed to handle it.
Okay, did you follow up with that?
Not yet, no.
What are you waiting for?
I thought the state was too.
Well, is, is there going to be?
Contacted the state too, right? And, uh, because I was contacted by them saying that they were going to look into it too.
Okay, so what's, what's the process here, is the board moving up the, the field here, what else is going on? Because we're not in the loop here from what this board is actually, you know, working on with this cancer situation. So the point being is this is that need a resolution when it floods, need to do to test them, we had flooding in April, as you know, it was smog all over the place. Nobody came down and tested, nobody came down and sampled it, nobody knows what's in it. The lady from Beaver Swamp said the stuff in her house, there's all sorts of pollutants, pesticides, fertilizer, who knows what's in it, we're breathing that stuff clean when it dries up. We're all getting sick, but yet you guys are sitting there not doing nothing about it. Why is that? My wife is life, long time resident, you mentioned that sir, right? Right, the fifty years in the village, she's got two types of cancers, what are we doing? We're looking for the source, it's a village of Marinerick issue, but it's you guys that are the watchkeepers now. What are you guys doing? I think this board owes the Washingtonville Neighborhood Association an update, I think she grabbed the bull by the horns and trustee Yizer, if you say you're going to help everybody, let's get, because guess what, our list is growing.
Indeed it is, thank you. Tom. Um, you, we, we stated that we did, we did look into the county funding for it and that the state said that they were going to handle it. We just, at this point. We just, at this point, need to follow up with the state. Is that correct?
I understand.
And that's what we'll do. Thank you for the reminder.
Stuart Teager, um, went to cycle back to, as I said, who I've been raising for the last several meetings. Two years ago, the board approved about sixty thousand dollars to purchase Municity Five to manage building apartment records. Six months ago, the village manager said that it would be up and running by April. As I understand it, from talking to people in the building department, it's not even close. So I'm just wondering if anybody can give any input on when this two-year-old software might be functional in the village?
Jerry, do we have an answer to what the software of? Start, repeat yourself, please. Can you repeat yourself? Repeat the software.
I gave you my three minutes. You, this board, two years ago, you weren't on the board.
I understand, but I'm asking you. I'm not going to sit there and take away your three minutes.
The question, the question was, uh, where are we with Municity?
Yeah.
Okay. Jerry, do you know?
We're using Municity, Mayor.
Using it?
Yeah.
We've been using Municity for ten years. That's a non-answer. You, this board, at least the mayor and trustee Lucas were on the board when the board spent their sixty thousand dollars to purchase Municity Five to make a public portal to the building department. How are we doing implementing that sixty thousand dollars worth of software?
My answer is we're using Municity.
Okay, so that's going to be the classic non-answer to the question. This board's received four or five emails in the last couple of weeks with the subject line, the building department is broken. I believe the evidence is overwhelming. I've written you that the village cannot produce anything to verify that anybody in the building department has the training that's required by the state to do their jobs. Unless that, this board thinks that's a good thing, I'm not sure why they can't produce those records. We have an HR department now. Wouldn't an HR department keep records of required training? Okay, so what's the issue? Why do I have to wait eight months, apparently, to get records of the required training for employees? It makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
So loud.
Yada, yada, yada. A, a few things, just to touch on the affordable housing. Understand, nobody's guaranteed affordable housing, but if we don't build it, everybody is guaranteed not to have affordable housing.
That's a good one.
I actually wrote something in next door. I actually, uh, it was very nice, a lot of responses. It was about the fact that we've had a lot of problems with the beach this year due to rain, due to contamination from, uh, you know, heavy rains washing from the streams and the county has closed our beach quite a number of times. So I brought up, uh, once again about possibility of a pool. And I had over nine thousand people, uh, looked at the post and a lot of pros and cons. And quite frankly, everybody was, was, you know, very nice. Nobody, you know, attacked anybody. Everybody had their different opinions, but I did hear a couple of things that maybe thinking outside of the box would work. One person basically said, look, we got, um, we got the roller sprinklers and we got other sprinkler system. Why do we have to necessarily have an in-ground pool? Why can't we possibly do something with sprinklers on the grass with maybe a, uh, one of those blow-up slides and some small pools and that you set up, you know, kind, kind of like you can set up around the poolside around it. And you don't have a indoor pool. You don't have a large project. What you do is you have a rather smaller project, use sprinklers, uh, you know, use maybe sloppy slides, maybe, uh, maybe, maybe, you know, one of those slides where you slide from the top with water and then just surround it with, you know, some picnic, picnic tables and, and, and some umbrellas. So the parents can be around it. You could do it at the far side of the band, uh, the bandstand, the far side of the beach. You don't have to build a water park for two million dollars. You, you don't have to have a, uh, a real drainage system because all it is is water come, coming out and going on people, you know, there's no chemicals or anything else. So it's just a matter of that we have maybe, uh, some of the people have a little bit of more imagination in the village or it's council, something else. Maybe kind of MacGyver, Department of Rec, Department, maybe we can, we, we can, uh, MacGyver, a little small spray park that would suit the needs of the village without doing a, a, a big, you know, project with a pool, without doing a two million dollar spray park, which is, which is probably out, out of the, um, out of the ballpark. Just something to think about.
There is something there. Thank you.
Also. I'm going to bring this up on this. I just think you're about to do phase two of the sewers.
Yeah.
My street happens to be one of them. They have to go with a three-inch pipe to a six-inch pipe. At the same time, is there any way to notify residents and maybe some of the residents at the same time that pipe gets replaced? We can replace the sewer line from our houses into, into the street at the same time if it's needed, if the street's already opened up and I need to replace my sewer pipe.
Got it. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Who's brave enough to follow me?
I was happy to see that you're working with the state to fix the traffic pedestrian signals on Boston Post Road and Fenimore and that's going to take a long time if we study. I can make a recommendation or suggestion that in the meantime, you put some kind of signs on Fenimore alerting drivers when they're coming down Fenimore, when they make the left turn. Be aware, people are going to be walking and perhaps put some kind of signage to alert pedestrians crossing Boston Post Road to be aware of cars coming down in the meantime. It's going to be well for the state gets ready to fix it. Thank you for doing that. The second thing is I want to give you kudos, Tom, for, um, changing the RFP and, um, in accordance, because clearly developers need more time. You, you change the dates and adding site visits. Uh, 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 thank you for doing that. That was appropriate. And I thank Mr. Teagan for bringing it up. The third thing is this gentleman over here, this lovely gentleman with the gray hair. I happen to recognize him from watching Larchmont trustee meetings. I, I believe this is the same gentleman who works there.
He, he's a reporter. He works for Larchmont Legend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I think maybe you should introduce him to the crowd because I see him taking pictures. If long it's, maybe the people in the audience don't know who he is. Uh, 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 I'm just saying, ask him to introduce him so everybody understands who he is, that he's doing.
He's a reporter.
I don't introduce everybody in the audience.
As a fellow traveler, I can.
Oh, okay. Am I correct? I feel like I'm a communicator. I mean, I thought you worked for the, for the village.
No, no, he's a reporter.
He's a real reporter.
It actually.
I told you.
You don't see many of them.
I just told you. Okay, okay. All right, all right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yeah. We'll catch up. We'll, we'll trade war stories, sir.
My name is Sharon Torres. I am the commissioner on Harbor Coastal Zone. I am just transparency contestant mayor this year and also the president of the hall. I am here on behalf of the board and myself. Uh, I think this is for Jerry and I'm sorry to change this up a little bit. About a month or so ago, there was some emergency notice that came out about small mammals in an infestation in Washingtonville. I believe that was about rats and as it started in Washingtonville, I know it's moved to Oriente. It's now moved up sort of to us. We have them out in the middle of the day, just running around, no big deal. Since that emergency order came out, haven't seen any kind of agenda or, you know, timeline of what we're doing, how we're doing it, how we're going to keep the rats just moving from one area to the other as opposed to getting rid of them. And I know that in my, um, in my building or actual functions, so if you have any kind of updates, you can share with your guests.
Thank you.
Small mammals includes raccoons too.
And squirrels.
And squirrels.
All right. Let's, let's move on to agenda. Because we have, we have four public hearings. Lordy. First is the comp plan update, which Mr. Desai has been, uh, patiently waiting for. Hello, Neil. He's on, I'm not just talking to myself. He's on Zoom.
Hello, good evening, everybody. I purposely, I wanted to show you the before picture where I had a full head of black hair when I started in two thousand seventeen, working on the comp plan, and now I have a full head of salt and pepper hair.
Looks good on you. You wear it well.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I, as far as the, uh, I'm just going to share my screen briefly here. Uh, on planvom.org, uh, as well as on the agenda, uh, there's a link to the public hearing, the August, today's public hearing draft of the comprehensive plan. And also the index of recommendations and implementation that has been updated. And also just wanted to point out that the comments and responses table, this has been updated since the last public hearing to include, um, statements made and, uh, email, email, uh, emails that have come in with other points, uh, on the comprehensive plan. And so we appreciate all the comments people have brought. It's made us think and think more and made for a better plan. I think there's things had to be de-corrected, things to be updated. And, um, the response table indicates, uh, how, how, uh, the, uh, how we respond, what are responses to each comment and if it had any specific changes, uh, and to, it changes into the, how we're going to change the draft that you see here, the August fourteenth draft. So that's, that's the intro, um, for, for the, for the, for the public hearing. And unless there's any more questions or Greg, is there anything you want to talk about regarding the, uh, the other matters with the, the, the full environmental assessment?
Uh, before Greg goes, I just want to need a motion to open the public hearing. One favor. Mr. Cutler.
Sure. So, uh, since your last meeting, we prepared the, uh, with, with hardest to hand over deal. Team, um, we worked together. They prepared the FEAF, which I reviewed, which is essentially the full environmental assessment form, part one, two, and three, including a substantial narrative that goes through all of the, the aspects of the plan, all of the recommendations and it goes line by line. You know, showing how most of the plan is really advancing the environmental, uh, conditions within the village. And so, you know, we presented to you as your, as your environmental assessment for your consideration.
Thank you. Uh, is anybody in the public like to comment upon this? Okay, and bring the board.
Talking about it a lot.
Yeah, no.
What, what, what's the next step?
Approval of the contract.
It's your, it's your discretion to, to approve. Oh, um, one other item, um, the, the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission has also sent you
Yes.
A letter, the details, um, their, their views on.
I was, I was, I was. Wish, wish they would have been a little bit more specific. Did they have something specific they would like? They would just sort of, they could mind was very vague. Um, I, I, I thought the staff report was, uh, was on the money.
Yeah.
That was my reaction.
Okay. Yeah, well, what's the boards want? Do you, do you want to approve this tonight?
Keep it open, uh, 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 I don't know. It is.
To ask HZM?
No, the HZM is. We have everybody, the county's responded, HZMs responded.
I mean, uh, almost.
I almost, yeah.
I almost wish somebody from HZM were, were here that I could say, what, what was it we were getting at? And what would you like the wording to be?
But they, they, they were just keeping mind, bear in mind.
Okay.
All right. Somebody wants to stand a motion to close the public hearing?
Well, or adjourn. I mean, do you think, I think that considering that it's August, maybe this is something that we should adopt in September, at the first meeting in September, when the public is actually.
Something, something would.
I mean, that's, it's not going to change anything.
I don't know. It might. I mean, I think that, that, that there were some recommendations and I think that, um, we can close the public hearing, but Neil has Neil and, and Greg have to incorporate the rec, I mean, we, do you need our, us to support the recommendations or?
Are you talking specifically about the consistency recommendations?
All the comments and the responses and on the HZM recommendations.
So the comments and responses, the, the items that were changed, um, in that were based on the work session that we had last. So, uh, any of the changes there are reflective of the conversation.
They're in the draft that got published today.
Yes, and Neil, you can confirm there in the, both the comment and response and also changes were made within the current August fourteen.
That's right. That's right. If I, I had wanted to highlight, because obviously you can't see in the plan unless you memorized it, what changed. I had been wanting to highlight ideally like the PDF that showed the highlights of where, where things were changed in response to comments, uh, but I didn't have a chance to do that, um, in, in submitting this, uh, this draft. Just to make it easier to, if you wanted to look, look and see how, um, everything was.
I, I, I don't think anything substantive, I mean, I'm, I'm by a way, but I really doubt anything's going to substantively change. Yeah.
I mean, they were minor, they were all pretty minor changes.
Nothing stood out to me at all. It seemed, it seemed.
So.
And this is the fourth public, I believe this is the fourth public hearing we've had.
Fourth public hearing, God knows how many work sessions, uh, you know, public input charades, uh, you know, uh, online surveys, uh, dozens and dozens of emails. I don't know how much more.
Yeah, I just expect, you know, expected more input. But, uh, from.
From the public?
Yeah.
So we have gotten a lot. It's just not tonight.
And we've mostly gotten it in writing.
Yeah, it's actually better. All right.
I'm, I'm, I'm ready for it.
It's, it's up to you guys. What do you guys want to do?
I recently voted on it. On September. It would, it's more appropriate to, I don't, I don't like.
Then somebody needs a motion to adjourn it. What's the first meeting in September twelve? Then I need a motion to adjourn this. It's a.
So moved.
Second, it's September twelve.
Yes.
And let people know we're going to be adopting it.
We're going to actually vote on it, speak now or hold your peace.
Sally, please call the rule on this one.
That's these wrong news.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a read.
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Okay, the next public hearing is on housing discrimination law. This is really moving our housing discrimination law into the twenty first century. And really what it does, the old law, what a trustee is a village manager declares that his public policy of the village manager to eliminate and prevent discrimination and involuntary segregation based upon race, color, race creed, color, national origin, or sex, and we're changing it to race creed, color, national origin, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or expression, military status, sex, age, disability, marital status, and lawful source of income of familial status, which is basically what New York State is now.
Okay.
We need a motion to open the public here.
So moved. Second.
All favor. Any any concerns from the board?
Yeah. Simple is better, it's consistent.
And it's contemporary.
Any concerns from the audience? Now, I'd like to make a motion to close public here.
So moved.
All favor. I need a motion to adopt. Call the rule.
Dusty's Rollins, you guys are read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor.
One C nuisance abatement law. Jerry, you want to explain this a little bit?
Nuisance law?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Where are you going? I'm just kidding.
That's awful.
Yeah, I need a motion to open a public hearing. All in favor. Basically, what what this is, is it gives it gives the village the ability to close establishments that are consistently violating the law. We had establishments that were selling marijuana without a license, which is you can't do in a village even with a license. We we had different different establishments offering massages that would unlicensed massage parlors. So what this does is it allows us, if a business or an entity does that more than three times, the village manager can close the establishment, or if it's in an office building, let's say, close that part of the office building until situations are remedied, and the 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 airing party has had their day in court.
There's one paragraph, Mayor, in two seventy nine, three A, village managers authorized to order the discontinuance of any activity in the building structure, real property, where the public nuisance is and to order the closing of the building structure and real property to the extent necessary to avoid the nuisance. So that was what I was looking for, and I started pulling up on my on my phone. So that's really the the heart of what this is all about, to be able to have the ability to deal with a problem in a structure or property in our art, and then try to resolve it. But close it first, or discontinuances to the record. And Mary came up with.
This is a request from.
Please.
So because they've had repeated incidents where they've they've temporarily shut someone down, only to find that they go back into business.
Very.
Yeah, in addition to that, statutes. Thank you. The proposed law also has a notice requirement, so the village manager can't immediately shut them down. Notice and due process protection is the law, it protects residents who live in a building that is declared a nuisance, so residents who live in a building where there is a nuisance aren't affected. I think those are very important.
Thank you. Sir.
Just some clarifications, sounds very familiar to some of the nuisance laws in New York City. Does this affect both the landlord and the establishment? Because what they do in New York City is, if they had a club that they had a problem with, not only would they padlock the club, but they will also hold the owner responsible for what went on as he rented the club. And the owner would have to show cause why he could reuse that property. Therefore, it's more incentive to get rid of a establishment that the village really didn't want. You understand?
Yeah, I do.
Say.
Yeah, Mary.
Most of the club was in New York.
No, we we want to send, let Mary answer.
Yeah.
The law applies equally to owners and operators. So if the building is closed, both the owner and the operator are responsible. Although only the owner, I think, would petition. Yeah, the owner or the operator could petition to reopen it once the nuisance has been abated. Does that answer your question?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other concerns from the board or the audience?
One more question, three times of what type duty?
It's three times over a one-year period or two convictions over a two-year period?
Thank you.
I find it very hard to believe that a landlord would not know that he had an illegal massage parlor in the property. So especially since they advertise and it put signs outside. I really don't have a lot of compassion for folks like that. And a motion to close the public here.
So moved, second.
All in favor.
All right.
Now let's entertain a motion to adopt the law.
So moved, second.
All roll, please, Sally.
Dusty Rollins?
Yes.
You guys are read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes, Mayor Murphy?
Hi. I need a motion to open a public hearing on administration of affordable housing and placement programs.
So moved.
All in favor.
All right.
In sum and substance, the town of America left us hanging. Years ago, when the village got rid of its housing office, we consolidated with the town of America. And the 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 deal that was reached was the town of America would then do placement for us for an affordable unit that came available in the village. We have the gentleman who spoke before, Mr. Hirsch, has one in one of his buildings. And it's not rented yet because the town just got rid of that department. And no longer provides that function anymore. And they didn't tell us that we're going to be doing that. And so you know, we'll you know, we'll deal with the the fallout from that, but we have to fix the problem ourselves. So this law basically allows the village to contract out with an entity that places people in affordable housing. Jerry's in some substance that.
That's correct, Mayor, basically, it removes from the code the town of Maranac Public Housing Agency, and it replaces it with village or its designated agent.
And this is at the cost of the land.
Correct.
Right.
We're not spending money, but it's it's a shame that they dropped the ball and people haven't been in housing that they they deserve to be in.
Although I I think.
And and I do, I do want to add that they were. And now I think we need to investigate with the state, but they were responsible for checking on section eight and increases and all of that stuff, and that young lady who came up to the to the podium, that was the town of Maranac's responsibility.
Yes. Anybody else?
There's the question on a this is a stick lower of the section eight, this is just a stick over the responsibility of our quality of responsibility for the affordable
Placement.
Units that are in the village.
Placement, the placement of people in affordable units.
Okay, and to one of the other residents' questions, do we actually have a comprehensive list of all the affordable housing that's in the village, whether it's rent stabilized, Washingtonville, any 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 at all housing that is is affected by these laws, and if we do, even though we can't put our residents on the top of the list, can we put out a comprehensive list of what is available and what the criteria is to get on the affordable housing and make sure that's on our website, so our residents know that there's twenty units in the village, and this is the this is the criteria income wise for you to be available, so they can get on a waiting list.
We will do that.
So Glenn, the county has that exact. And and we have the link, we'd have the link to that to our on our website. Yep, they have that exactly, yep.
I need a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
All favor.
All right.
I'd like, I'll make a motion to adopt the law.
Second.
Sally, please.
Please Rollins?
All right.
You guys are read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you all very much. Okay, now to the order the bills. First item is a transfer to fund Ida recovery efforts, taking one hundred and fifty from the fund balance. Is this with repairs, materials needed for the village?
These are leftover items that still need to be resolved.
From Ida, okay.
Part of it is a substantial portion that has to go to Con Ed to increase our gas service at our beloved fires.
And is this going to be reimbursable from FEMA?
It'll go back and move fund balance.
Yeah.
We know about when.
This portion is mitigation, so Courtney and I and Jeff are dealing with mitigation right now. We're still getting, and I think I advise, we send you the emails of when we get the other stuff. So this is this is mitigation, this could take twelve months to bring back. Yep.
Any questions, concerns? The audience? Take a motion.
So moved, second.
All favor. Next up is budget transfers. Budget transfer from Recreation Beach Tiki Harbor Island Concert to, no, it's from it's from the Harbor Island Concert money to Beach Tiki event, it's a hundred and fifty dollar transfer. And the other is Park Seasonal Meter Repair Part Time to Park Seasonal salaries. We we don't have that meter repair part time position filled, right?
Correct, and but they still fulfill the obligations of the meter repair stuff. Right. It's under parks now.
Questions, concerns? I'll make the motion.
Second.
All roll.
Please Rollins?
Yes.
You guys are read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Hi. The next up is the abstract of ordered vouchers, and tonight's grand total is one million, two hundred and forty six thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and three cents. Questions, concern?
One that I haven't asked already.
Questions, concerns from the public?
I had asked, I had a couple, can I?
Go ahead, Nori.
And it was just basically, it's it's pages five and six, and I sent it to Jerry late today, I thought I had sent the email. It's Chase Credit Card Services, and they just, you know, they're not big amounts, but they just get bundled, and I'm just wondering if we should have more of a record of those going forward. Like, know what, there's five bills of like, like, it's so it's like four hundred, three seventy six, six thirty two, three hundred and forty dollars, thirteen hundred dollars, twenty, I think, six hundred, it's hard to read. Just that they're just bundled bills, I'm wondering if we should just have a better idea of what they are.
No, we could add some detail to it, that we were asking for, you had, one of them's the PD credit card, and the other is the assistant manager's credit cards.
From the audience?
We're three, three, page sixteen, Janice Kane for the July cleaning of the courtroom, which I believe is this room, nine thousand five hundred and fifty five dollars. Seems like a lot.
Is that a quarterly?
It's the whole village, they clean the whole village, they don't just clean the quarter.
So then it wasn't.
That's for the whole village, so maybe we can put that in the detail next time, I mean, I've seen other abstracts where Janice Kane lists separately other, like down at the the park. Page fourteen, this is just a curious question, Carol Catering, three thousand dollars for Light the Night? I looked on the website for what Light the Night was, I couldn't find it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, was that probably the police night out?
I don't know.
And we didn't do fireworks, we didn't, we instead of doing fireworks, they said some.
No, 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 that's, I just hadn't heard the term Light the Night. Page twelve. This month, this is abstract, almost a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars for attorney's fees. I do hope the board will note that and consider looking into hiring a full-time attorney. The Abrams Fensterman bill is sixty nine thousand dollars. When you add up the detail on it, it only comes up to forty four thousand dollars. Does anybody know what the other twenty five thousand dollars is?
Possibly it is a typo, if we sit here and add it up. I said possibly it could be a typo, so if we sit here and add it up, we can possibly find out the correct amount.
Okay, I'm just.
No, I know you're you're putting, you're pointing it out, so I'm saying out.
Right, and I will go back to what I say many times when I'm up here. This board, right, law is required to know what you're paying for when you authorize bills.
And I appreciate you pointing these things out, but not all the time when we sit there and we possibly miss it.
Thank you. I think the prudent thing to do would be just put on my next agenda and pay it back. There is a general comment, there's the other village consulting engineer. In the last year, we also hired a full-time staff, as you mentioned here, and I believe an assistant for him. This abstract has a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars in payment to the consulting engineer. And I've seen from the notes that we're just giving him another two hundred thousand dollar contract, or two hundred to three hundred thousand dollar contract for the next section of I and I work. So the question is, what was the economics in hiring a full-time village engineer? And can we shift some of the work from the consulting engineer to him? Thank you.
Motion to adopt the abstract.
Oh, that's already cleared.
Okay.
Not all the details.
Need a second?
Second.
All the rules, Sally?
Dusty's Rollins?
Yes.
You guys are read?
No, but not all the details there, okay. Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas? Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Thank you. Okay. Next up, new business. Resolution authorizing execution of River River Leveling Monitoring System Agreement for six units, we we decided to go with the six units because it was it was a better deal. It was a hundred and twenty four thousand for the, no, a hundred hundred and twenty four that? The six?
It was one twenty four for the six and one oh one for three.
And one oh one for three, so. For those who are just tuning in, these are cameras that also have speakers on them that are are mobile, and we're going to place them in different areas of the community to monitor rivers, but they also have other functions, as Lou pointed out, they could be used for events and for police.
Security. They're essentially twenty, what, twenty-two feet tall?
Yeah.
Yeah, their towers, twenty-two feet tall, they can telescope up. They have solar panels, backup generator.
Right.
Pretty awesome. You know, it'll give us real time, real time information, information on on flooding as opposed to what we do now, which is, you know, we'll wait for it.
Obviously, there'll be one up by the dam, there'll be one on probably on Plaza Avenue.
We can, we can move them around.
One in. Right, one in Columbus Park, just you know, the the points that we know uh are going to be problematic. And Jerry can make it, Jerry or whoever, the police chief can make an announcement over it.
Correct, audible.
They're audible. So if you didn't get the text, if you didn't get the email, if you didn't get the uh emergency warning, you know, you could, you could still hear an audible signal.
They have sirens and I can speak into it and record it uh.
And and during a, during a rain event, uh people will be able to uh. Go to the uh either either the Zoom that the uh pictures are up on or onto the website to actually see what the rivers are doing. So they don't have to uh sit at home and. It it seems to be exactly what we need.
Yep. I agree. Alright.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions or concerns?
Bill, how much of the Build Back America money that you began two years ago and how we gotta?
We're we're paying for the first year with the offer.
Yeah, yeah.
How are we gonna pay for it expensive yet?
We're just going year by year.
So it's gonna be an operating expense.
We'll see how it works out.
Works, right, we don't know if we're gonna do it continuously.
And we have, we can, we can.
It's a thirty day cancellation.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, these are all things we thought, we thought of uh in in the uh work session. It doesn't look to me to be any reason not to do it.
Uh, just to address Glenn, I also think we should explore some of the state and federal funding um for flood mitigation because that might be something. So we could do in partnership with upstream communities.
I I suspect also that our neighboring communities are gonna want uh, want a similar uh similar thing. They may wanna uh, you know.
Get out the bad way.
Get in on the bad way.
Um, similar for I just have a technical question. Particularly since we're embarking on this art floor project. Will this visual camera tell us about the flows, the amount of water, the volume of water? That's going to do this. So I can understand that a camera will tell us the height. But I think when we're trying to deal with flooding and damaging damages from flooding, we probably also need to know. So it was my impression, I don't have, I don't know a lot about these kinds of river, but I thought there were river gauges that would do both. Do height and flow. And it sounds to me, if I'm not, somebody knows the technical, that the cameras are just going to do the visual and I assume will just kind of. Where a widespread flooding is. So since we're going to be doing all this work in the rivers. I expect we're changing the flows. And I think it would be a good idea to have a a way of measuring that. And I am not convinced that a camera will do that. Thank you.
Just for folks at home, the the system that we looked at originally uh did not give information in real time. So they would, they would give you uh an update every hour. So and anybody who lives in a flood zone knows an hour is a lifetime.
And we had also discussed to the, uh, you, I think you were referring to the USGS uh river gauges. Uh, that was a a federal program that was uh defunded uh by the Reagan administration. And uh, and uh, after that point, the USGS kept it going by having local communities pay for it. Um, it it's it's a good, it's a great, it's great research information, but it's not gonna help us with emergency response, which is what we really need. I'd love them to put river gauges in the, in the uh, in the river. I don't, they just think we should have to pay for it.
The secret?
Yes, um, when when river gauges were first discussed, I thought the board member said the goal was for us to own the equipment. Um, I'm just wondering, we're not gonna own this, right?
Uh, no, uh, uh, the the river gauges that uh. I thought we were go- going to own them originally, and then we were renting them, and then we weren't really, really renting them. We were only subscribing to the service for the information. So we, so it wasn't even that we were renting the river. We didn't even have access to the.
Okay.
In real time, so um.
Could move them.
Uh, owning them would have been great. The these, these are not for sale. God, these are not for sale.
Okay. Um, my other question is about, did we um do competitive procurement on this?
I think there's only one company that does it.
It's on, it's on a nation, nationwide, national uh. It's on a national um co-op. Just like our, just like our trucks. Look.
I thought you were doing this as a sole source provider.
It it's on a, it's on a national co-op and there are other companies uh that have something similar, but nothing like this.
So what's the national co-op it's on?
Mr. Sawnofford here, he remember, I don't remember.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Sawnofford range, he's not here tonight.
Sorry, I didn't catch that either. What's the name of the national? Co-op?
Anyway, these are the same company that the NYPD uses.
That's not my specific question is, um, whether we're getting the best deal we can for residents. By doing competitive procurement, that's the point of competitive procurement.
So you, we could delay this further?
I believe that that Dan did his due diligence in terms of looking up different spaces or different organizations. This is for what the need is, so.
Generally, I mean, generally, I see that in the resolution. I didn't see that in the resolution.
So many the different choices that we look through or?
No, generally, if it's being done through a co-op provider, it's put in the resolution. And I don't see that in the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
But it is.
I'm looking for it now, but I can't find it.
Yeah.
When Jerry finds it, then we'll answer.
You boil it tomorrow.
I'll wait, I think it's important, we're about to.
Ten minutes, no waiting.
I'm sorry.
Sir, I said, when Jerry finds it, we will answer, but if Tim can come up and speak behind you, is that appropriate?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
No worries. Uh, Tim O'Connor, so don't have have to say about the uh monitor devices, the solar powered? And they have a uh generator backup, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so April thirtieth, we had that issue with Plaza Avenue at night. And so the water came up over six, seven feet. So if you knock out the generator that runs the 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 device, how does the solar work at night?
It doesn't, it's the generator, Tim.
Yeah, no, so the.
And if we're having serious flooding, we'd be out there to deal with it.
Well, my point though is the battery and the generator is at the bottom of the base, gets covered with water. So now you have a solar piece at night, solar doesn't work at night. And and on top of that, we had an issue with the Canadian uh fires coming in. Did anybody see the sun for four days? So how does those devices work in that type of environment?
It's the backup generator, Tim.
And they have, they have landline uh too, right?
No, so yeah.
Jerry, what I'm asking you now is that if you lose the generator, you'd have nothing. The solar doesn't work. That's the point.
It's a.
No, no, no.
It's a battery backup.
No, the generator, the generator is not only off a solar, the generator runs on.
Yes.
Of, yeah, right, so.
Right, so it's covered with water with the battery. If you lose the primary, how does the device work with the secondary, the solar?
But at that point, Tim, we're flooded and we gotta deal with other things, not necessarily worried about the item.
So my point is that you have this device on, it's the one with the lightning rod.
But it's not our device.
Yeah, I am.
Renting it, yeah.
You you don't want it?
You don't want it?
No, I'm sure this thing's better. Let me tell you a quick story. I'm from upstate. I got a place upstate. You know what they do upstate? They have gauges in the water that they're, they're run by wireless. All you gotta do is go to the webpage of the town and pull up the information and you got it at the tip of your fingers. The stuff with the eye in the sky and solar and backup, it doesn't work. Primary loses, the solar doesn't work, and then you got a lightning rod.
What's the, the name, what's the, do you know the name?
I know, yeah, this three or four towns in the state and Catskills add or on this, do it.
Yeah, I.
What do you think, what do you think was Google it, this one?
No, so we, it is, it is a sole source. We got a letter from the company that this is a sole source item.
And I'd like to address that.
Yeah, that's. Well, you're right, I see it now.
The um, first of all, the controller's office says, quote, a sole source procurement is one. Which only one vendor can supply the commodities or services required by an agency. The agency must document why the proposed vendor is the only viable source.
Hmm.
The office, the OSC, Office uh State Controller's Office. Approval must be obtained for sole source contract. If value is over the discretionary threshold, which is thirty-five thousand dollars for this, so we're well over it. Um. The, I read the letter from the company. And it starts off saying, this letter confirms that Live View Technologies as owner and manufacturer. Is the only sole source provider of Live View Technologies Mobile Security System. That's like saying McDonald's is the only place to get McDonald's burgers. So I would.
Who signed it? So mayor, the general counsel of the company signed it.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Teager.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the buzzer call.
You you've you've well over three minutes.
Suggest that the board. Live.
Thank you.
New York State Finance Law, chapter section eleven. And do competitive procurement on this or ask the controller's office to do what they say you have to do. You must document.
Your time is up, sir. Please relinquish the mic. Your time is up. It it's plenty important, you you've had your say. There's a lot of things important. You what, what you say is not the most important thing in the world. There's other, the the, there's rules, Mr. Teager.
So I'm just.
Follow the rules, please.
Board should not approve this tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Law and do.
Yeah, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certain amount of uh urgency to flooding, I can think.
Okay, uh, if I wanna make a motion.
Some move. Second.
All roll.
Custis Rawlings?
Yes.
You guys are read?
I'm saying this to me, the um gauges are the the monitoring, like.
Yeah.
If there's a lot of questions, there's hesitation. And God knows that everybody would, not everybody, I don't wanna say everybody, but there'll be. Questions if we vote on it, it'll be questions if we don't vote on it, and.
The whole point, we have, we have, we have a.
No, 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 but it's, it's, if we have the right thing versus if we have the wrong thing. And if we stop it or we move it, and that's, this, that seems to be the constant, um.
Constant thing is delay. You're gonna, gonna move forward or not?
It's delay. But whatever is the right thing based upon what, and that's just the thing I'm thinking about in my head. And you, however you. It. You can, however, what it, whatever it is.
Even so.
Even.
Yes.
I would say right now, if we didn't. This is just one of the one, okay, I'm gonna say that right.
Okay.
Any comment?
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
No, I'm interested in finding out what Tim just suggested.
Bear Murphy?
Hi.
I mean, I I agree. I mean, I like great flying with Tim, but I think longer we do nothing, the more we're just gonna continue to do nothing.
Yeah.
We can do this and look at what Tim is doing because, one, this is a, we're gonna be piling this, it's gonna have zero costs to us because it's gonna be funded by ARPA. We can still do something in addition, is I think the longer.
And we can cancel it on thirty, thirty days, no.
I I I've been here a long time and I've watched the staff. I trust their research and I trust their efforts. And you know, it it's, it's, it's a, it's it's.
You're right, Tom, because that's something that.
See, let me finish it. It it's, you know, it it's easy to get up and throw rocks at something. And they say, yeah, but there's this and there's that and there's this and there's that. You know, we're doing something, moving forward. It's it's, it's gonna be an improvement. It's gonna be a an ability for people to monitor what's going on, which is, you know, what we want.
Right now, the folks in the flood zone are blind, just the way they've been blind.
Seventy years.
Who live where it doesn't flood don't care that it floods where uh.
Oh, I don't hear the like, oh.
Don't call off the audience.
I, and.
You're running next year.
The thing is, no, and I wholeheartedly agree, Tommy, because this is something also that has been on my mind a lot in terms of, do we? The thing with government, with any government. We could change, if the law changes today and then next year, somebody else may come into this space and change it back to whatever or change it to whatever they feel is necessary. Why is it not possible that if we decide to go in this route with this particular thing? That we can't find the space and grace? To say, okay, thirty days, that is, that's been stated in the paperwork that we have thirty days to to like, to um, to get rid of it or not use it.
It's not working.
If it doesn't work and we don't use it. But if we don't try to do something and then not trust the people who we do have in, eh, working for the village. Like, and also listening to the residents.
It's hurricane season. This could be, this could, we could, we could.
I know.
Tomorrow, but there's no, the delay, delaying is playing with people's lives.
It's a lot. It, there are three votes for it, it's.
Alright.
But it's, I think it's beyond that.
It's it's done, it's done.
Or something else, we can change our mind in thirty days, um, but. But to say that there's no cost to it because of ARPA money isn't really accurate because that ARPA money, we we. We're spending that money.
Yeah.
That it's, it's, it's a binary choice. If it goes to this, it doesn't go to something.
It's a choice of doing something or doing nothing.
No.
And you know, it is, and we just chose to do something and 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 if 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 we choose to do something else in the future, that's fine. But a- as as Lou said, there's an immediacy to this.
You know, there was, there was.
Ocean, I'm still talking, Nori.
Army gauges, there was no immediacy a year ago when it was proposed by someone that you just didn't wanna listen to. So we've spent more than a year talking about what was gonna go on.
Nori, what was proposed, and you know, what was proposed had no benefit. There was, there was no immediate notification. It took an hour to get information from them. You know that. And even the person who proposed it, when he heard that, said, you're right, that that, that's not what we should be doing. So it had nothing to do with who was, hold on, it had nothing to do with who was liked or who was not liked. If it would have worked, we would have went with it. And and that, you know, to to assert that is just, you know, it's gamesmanship, you know.
You're saying, when you're saying, if you don't agree with it, you're opposed to it. I mean, I think that there, there, there are reasonable people can come to different conclusions. There may be other ways of handling this. This is passed.
And we can deal with them.
Jerry was able to negotiate a good deal, which means we can change our mind in.
Thirty days.
Or 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 six months.
Alright, it's done, thank you. Uh, the next up is a resolution, resolution revising date of the twenty twenty-four St. Patrick's Day parade. Uh, hey, they wanna have the parade on uh March twenty-fourth with no rain date. Because that's how they roll.
Yeah.
It it, rain or shine, they usually have a rain date, but this year they wanted no rain date. Uh. Need a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
There's a resolution accepting donations from various residents for the Marine Education Center. Uh, in total, it comes to a hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, so I think it's what, you know, they they keep a donation box at the door. And uh, this is probably the total of what people have dropped in there.
Is that a lockbox?
It's a lockbox, yeah, I think it is.
I would hope so.
It's a little watchfly of our marine biologist. Who's that? Al Gore in the lock box.
I didn't wanna sound like Al Gore. Sound like himself.
The lock box, poor guy.
Yeah, way too smart.
Exactly. Uh. Resolution accepted, okay, I I need a motion on that.
Some move.
Your second?
Second.
Marine Education Advisory Committee.
No, no, he's an M E C.
All in favor?
Alright.
Can we, can we not have cross talk here, please? Okay, the next up is resolution accepting Wood, Westchester Joint Water Works. Joint Water Works Project A. Thirteen eighty-four. Uh, this is a replacement of an undersized and compromised water main on Acorn Lane in the city of New Rochelle. Westchester Joint Water Works is the retail water supplier to some areas in New Rochelle. And some areas of the town of Ha, of, no, the, the city of Rye. So we act as if we were, you know, their, their, uh, proud, private water provider. And what we do is, we replace their pipe. We recover the cost through. You know, the, the water fees of that area. It, it doesn't go to the other three municipalities. It just goes to the folks who live in that area. So, any questions, concerns? Give him the mic. It's three minute limit again.
When we recover the money over time. If we bond it, do we also get the interest that we paid on the bond?
I believe so.
I assume we're forty, um, I sent an email asking if you knew the statutory authority for the Water Works to do this. And I checked Water Works rates. The memo that we got from Mr. Bertschall says that there is this recovery mechanism. It looks like a recovery mechanism has been implemented for the city of Rye. But not for the city of New Rochelle, according to the water rates that they published. I don't think Westchester Joint Water Works has any right to set water rates. I don't think they have any rights to provide retail water service. Anywhere. If they're providing retail water service, I think they have to be licensed by the Public Service Commission. And I checked and I don't see any regulation by the. Um, Public Service Commission. So this is another lump sum of money. That you're asking Village of Merritt Act residents to pay. When we have residents who live on Beaver Strut. Beaver Swamp Rock, sorry, that's a tongue twister. Who need village support. So I asked you to adjourn this matter, confirm. That the Water Works has authority to do this. And that it's being done properly before we spend any more Village of Tax Care money. Thank you.
Hey.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to say hi, Augie. It's nice to see you on the screen. And the other thing I'd like to say is that some, that I think the choice could always be. To follow the law. Whether it's procurement. Whether it's the law that establishes Westchester Joint Water Works. Whether it's open meetings law or any other law. This board should be following the law. Thank you.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Hold roll.
Custis Rollings? You guys are read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hi. Uh, Westchester Joint Water Works, I M A, it's a resolution authorizing execution of I M A related. To the Westchester Joint Water Works. Uh, this, this is basically, uh, allows us to apply, uh, for grant. Uh, funding for the, uh, projects like the, uh, filtration plant. This year we're applying for a thirty-three million dollar grant. For the filtration plant. And, uh, the I M A. Will, uh, allow the three communities to come together and put in an application as one for the Westchester Joint Water Works. Any questions or concerns in the board? I don't know off the top of my head, but I will get you that information. Any questions from the audience? Hey, I need a motion.
It stands for, keep going off.
All in favor? Stands for what?
It stands for Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. State revolving. Fund. You're welcome.
I can give you, I can give you the, uh. Resolution at the meeting. Except this four G, uh, Department of State, Department, Department of Traffic Study of West Boston Post Road. There's, this, this is a very dangerous situation both on Boston Post Road and Fenimore and Boston Post Road and Delancey. Uh, recently, a, a child was hit by a car in that area. Uh, the village has made a no right turn on red restrictions in those areas. And we had to do that to get the state, because it's a good thing to do, first of all. But we're, we're trying to get the state, uh, to pull in and put in an all-way light. So that, that, there's a red light, uh, both on Boston Post Road. And on Fenimore and Delancey at the same time, which will allow people, uh, to cross. Uh, both diagonally and, uh, straight ahead without worrying about traffic turning into them. So we, we, we did our part when we, uh, changed the, the law, uh, to prohibit right turns. Now we're asking the state to do their part. So, any questions, concerns? Nope, need a motion?
So moved.
Yeah, Nora?
We said recently prohibited, we just changed.
Yeah, we changed that in the work session.
But I just, did we say right turn on red or right turn?
No right turn on red.
Doesn't say right turn on red. It says prohibited the right hand turning movement. Didn't say on red, so we might not.
We already changed the law to, to say no right turn on red.
Right, but the, this, this, this just says.
Yeah, alright, no right turn on red. You wanna make that amendment?
Yeah, so had previous, had recently prohibited the right, so swap out. Recently for previously, previously, and then previously prohibited the right hand turning movement on red. From Fenimore Road onto the Boston Post Road. Okay, so.
With that amendment, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All, no, all in favor? Thank you. The next up, I N I Phase Two Resolution. I'm sorry. Uh, the next up is the same resolution, uh, it put it for Delancey Avenue. I'll make that motion. All in favor? Thank you, Sally. Uh, Phase One and Phase Two, I N I. Jerry, you wanna just give us a brief?
Uh, yeah, so. This is the continuation of our sewer remediation project as it was mandated. Many years ago, this is the, um, second part of it, second phase of it. Uh, we work, uh, within the sec, the same contract. And so this is for the Harbor Heights area, the Rhineck area, um, from, um. From, from South Barry to, um, the Harrison Line and the West Basin. And there's another one that slips my mind. So, uh, this would be the finalization of that project. This is about an eighteen month project. And requires a lot of, uh. Replacement, so there's Department of Health with, um, um, reporting and approvals that are required as well.
Anyone say something about this?
Uh, this is what I was me- mentioning, uh, before the end of my statements. A lot of the replacements on the smaller streets, uh. Due to, uh, uh, health regulations, like we have a three-inch pipe, I believe, you have to have a six-inch pipe. Or eight-inch pipe, therefore they have to trench my street no matter what. Any, but any street that's being trenched, it might be moved the village to let the residents know. Because if you're gonna open up the street anyway, and a lot of houses like, uh, my house is ninety, a hundred years old. Um, we have old clay pipes. And, you know. I can then make a decision. Maybe I wanna replace my pipe at the same time the street is opened anyway. You know, that way, you know, two years from now or a year from now, I don't have to. Open up what was just done. And then do it. If there's any way that if somebody wants to coordinate, you know, with their plumber and the village from the street is opened up. To at that time. Because the trench is open anyway. Through the connection, then, you know, when, when the village seals it up, they don't have to worry about it being dug up again, just work on the house and stuff.
But they usually line, just line the pipe with PVC?
It matters how much damage there is, how much lock there is and such, and such like that. But even if they're just lining the pipe at the end. You still wanna make sure that, you know. Uh, the other one is, of course, we'll have to, uh. I, I assume that Dan Sernoff might be on vacation, but when he gets back, Tom will sharpen his pencil. And let's see if we can go out and get a, a grant for, uh, Phase, uh, Two to help with the cost. Thank you.
Thanks, Dylan.
Mayor, it was, um, Delance Neighbourhood that I couldn't remember. I don't know how that happened.
I'd like to say that this is the most bizarre. Um, resolution I've seen to. I guess it's just give a contract away again, with no competitive procurement. Has Phase One been completed? Don't, doesn't this board wanna know if we. Before you give, give. Or give a contract. For another three million dollars, when the first contract overran by thirty percent. Just seems like, you know, it's our tax dollars this board is spending. So, it just seems like a logical question. The law says they have to do protect competitive procurement. On anything over thirty-five thousand dollars. This is almost ten times that. I'm sorry, a hundred times, it's three point one five four billion dollars. So, I mean, you know, I'm a senior. My, you know, I'm not making a lot of money now, and this is my taxes going for this. So, I would just hope that somebody on the board would know if Phase One was completed. Before you give a contract to a vendor who wants thirty percent over.
I don't think Phase One is completed. They're still in the village and it was explained to us at the work session. But, because I asked this, I asked the question about why this was a change order, since it was essentially Phase Two, not Phase One. And the response I got was that they were giving us the same rate that they had previously and they were. Able to mobilize rapidly and. As we're under a consent decree, we have to get this.
Right, I, I, I heard that. I don't think there's a exemption for that in procurement law. That they're giving you the same rate, it's a different contract, it should have competitive procurement. And the other thing I'll bring up is that I think combined with this is another two hundred thousand dollars. Kellerian Sessions to inspect this, and I just wanna say. That I tried to get records. Their, their Kellerian Sessions. Oversight on this says that. They will prepare construction inspection reports. They shall provide daily construction oversight. Uh, the review work performed to verify quantities. Um, they prepare meeting agendas in minutes. Three years, millions of dollars out to Kellerian Sessions. And not one record has been made available about the work they've done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I would expect you would expect more from your. Consultant.
Thank you.
From your village manager, and that you all always take.
Well, you can't follow, you can't follow a timer.
Sorry, you let plenty other people run. You can't pick and choose.
No, stop.
Thank you.
Good night, sleep well. I'll see for planting of native species at Village on Parks. Oh, yeah, I, 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 I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Hold roll.
Custis Rollings?
Yes.
You guys are read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
No, because I think it's not a change order. It's a second phase of the contract. Oh, you know what, Tom, don't be, don't say yes, of course. This is a question I asked earlier. It's not a change order.
I, this is something that we have to get done, you know, post haste. We, we are under consent decree. And, uh, we, we, we could be. I'm talking, Nora. We could be dragged into court at any moment. And, uh, you know, so we, we, we can't fiddle around and it's part of, you know, what. Has been going on in the community, uh, the Jerry and the village manager. And the, uh, staff at D P W has been working really hard to keep us out of court because we will lose. Substantially in court.
Tom, I understand it, but we issued the contract December twenty twenty for Phase One. We, prob, the, and this is why I was surprised to see change order number five to a contract that's. Two and a half years old. It's, it's Phase Two, and that, that's, I think we've known about it. Um, I know we've been doing a lot of things. I do think that we have to be more, be careful about how we bid. It might have, we might have picked the same contract, but I, we might have gotten the same response. We might have gotten the best bid from the contractor, the contractor that we were using. But there have been, it is change order number, it's, I mean, it's, it's Phase Two, but it's bill this change order or advertise this change order number five. Because the, because there, there were a lot of change orders in this contract, so that's. My, my feeling is we have to be really, we have, we're, look what's happening with the state. We need to really be mindful about how we're spending money.
Okay, next time. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so Nora, you saying, so it's not necessarily about, is it about the contractor? Did you use the, the contractor, the wording, um, or it's the, um. It's, it's the money used, it's the money.
So, or all the above? Um, to try. It's, we signed a contract. For Phase One, this is Phase Two. We're just calling it a change order for the, it's one. I think, I think we probably should have handled it differently.
So changing the wording?
We'd have to have gotten, we'd have to have done procurement and gotten estimate.
If, if you don't remember the email, Mr. Spolzino said that we could approve it as a change order and that it was the same contract. It's just, we send a lot of emails and you don't get to read them, so that's all there is to it.
Missed that one.
I don't need to answer somebody when the board doesn't ask me questions for it.
Okay, that's fine. I, I'm just saying, I may have missed that.
You made a determination and we're good. If not, there's no way in hell that I'm gonna put a three and a half million dollar contract in front of you. That's insane.
Diversity training. We voted on that, right, Sally?
No.
No, that was in our work session.
No, no, not, not the. Native species first. Okay, thank you.
And diversity.
Thank you. I'm jumping ahead. I wonder why. Everybody has a chance to look at the resolution for the native species. This is so that in our parks and Village Home Properties, we will only plant native species so that it will help the environment and especially the the birds and the bees. And
there's one thing here. It also reinforces the use of zero or minimal pesticides to make sure that we're maintaining this area properly.
This puts us in sync with the code.
That's correct. Yep. By using the D E C list.
Any questions, concerns?
We're just committing the village to this. We're not committing residents.
Just us, just, just parks, just parks and the manager. Yep.
Questions, concerns? I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Resolution training, resolution training, diversity training. Resolution authorizing execution of contracts for diversity equity inclusion training for elected officials and staff. And we talked about a work session, making sure that there's a future mechanism for volunteers.
For the volunteer boards.
Yeah. Any questions, concerns?
A hundred and fifty staff people, including board trustees at this stage.
Sixty-three thousand dollars.
So we'll need some idea of what you want to do with volunteers in the future.
Okay, well, let's put that on a work session.
Yeah, that's fine. We can do that.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Transfer station roof. Resolution authorizing budget transfer for transfer station roof. Jerry talked about this in emergency, in emergency, in work session. The transfer station is an ancient building. The electrical service panel fell off the wall. It needs a lot of work to bring the new equipment up to snuff. So this is moving a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from contingent to the, the fund that funds repairs, you know, buildings. Okay?
Contingent.
Questions, concerns?
This is associated with the project, not from our contingency plan.
Has contingency.
We made that change today.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so mayor, it's this, so it's, the wording is cost to be funded through future issuance of debt or application of fund bounds.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That, with that amendment, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call.
Rollings?
Yes.
You guys are read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
You can, yes. Mayor Murphy?
Hi. We had three men come in June and they presented an idea for a music festival in September twenty twenty-four. They, and we're offering them two dates so they can pick a time to arrange it. September fourteenth, twenty twenty-four and September twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. It's called Flavors of the Sound Music Festival. And one of the folks is very well-known to us, Mr. Matt Sullivan from L M C T V. Any questions, concerns? Need a motion?
So moved.
All in favor? Hi. And resolution authorizing refund for building fees to Village Suds. And that is not a place that sells beer. That is a laundromat. Although when I read that, it would be a good name for a bar.
It would be a good name for a bar.
Probably is somewhere.
Exactly. After Hurricane Ida, the laundromat on Marinerac Avenue got totally wiped out. And it's taken them a while to get up the capital to do the work they have to do. And during the flood, we forgave building department fees for people with flood damage. And I guess that program has run out, but seeing that, you know, the, the community needs a laundromat and that they, this is a direct result of Hurricane Ida. This, this resolution allows us to forgive the building fees, which is one thousand seven hundred and ten dollars, their permit fees and helps them out in restoring laundry service to a lot of folks who need it down in Washington, Bill.
They, they were able to get about thirty thousand from various state and federal agencies and they're putting into this, into this business several hundred thousand dollars now with their own capital.
So every little bit helps. So we're forgiving seventeen hundred dollars here. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Last up.
Public comment? Thanks, thanks, Glenn. I appreciate it. Six A is, I don't have my agenda. Is, we did, Jerry, what else you have to report? Thank you.
I have to file for the record the tree and branch removal contract parking, parking permit agreement that we that we signed with L M C Media and the county planning agreement for infrastructure improvements on Mount Pleasant and Marinerac Avenue. And that's a big one.
Reports from the third treasurer?
Yes, mayor, please be advised Joseph Colombo resigned from committee and file for the record is the official primary election results. That is all, mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Augie.
Thanks, Augie.
Report from the village attorney.
On July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, the law, eleven twenty-three, it's about the state ending chapter three forty-two of the village code to expand the development bonus and development requirement for affordable housing.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Minutes, commissions, boards and committees. Minutes of Board of Trustees, regular meeting of June twenty-sixth, work session, regular meetings of July tenth and accounts payable meeting of July twenty-fourth and revised minutes of April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Minutes of Tree Committee meeting, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Minutes at a Board of Traffic Commission meeting of June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Minutes City Arts Council meeting of June first, twenty twenty-three. Minutes at a Committee for Environment meeting of June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Minutes at a Board of Ethics meeting of May seventeenth and June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Okay, I just want to remind folks that the last meeting in August is just a bill paying meeting. It's on the twenty-eighth and it's at five, five o'clock, right? Five fifteen.
And our next, our next full meeting.
And our next full meeting will be September twelfth.
September twelfth.
Uh, which is a Tuesday because we don't want to have it on September eleventh.
And before I forget it, let's put the, the students on the.
The twelfth.
The twelfth.
Yeah.
I forgot.
Sorry.
The, the.
The Ocre. The Ocre kids.
Yeah, the.
And in the interim, before our next full meeting will be Labor Day and the end of summer. I want to wish everybody a good rest of the summer. We had a very jam-packed summer here in the Village of Marinerac. All kinds of shows and pop-up concerts and more reports I have, the day camp was a resounding success as it is almost every year. So I just want to wish everyone a happy rest of the summer and thanks staff for doing such a great job to both entertain our residents and look out for our kids in daycare, which is a very important service. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
So moved. All in favor? Hi.